Thank you, Doogie. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 8th meeting of the Ojai City Council Admin Assistant Two, Bridgette is here. Thank you so much for filling in. Could you say the pledge for us?
Do you want to take roll call first?
Yes, could you please? Thank you.
Mayor Styx.
Here.
Mayor Proton Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Ruhl.
Here.
Thank you. And now the pledge.
Okay. Please stand. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. All right, we will move ahead to commission reports. Need commission reports?
We have Christine Steiner.
From the Arts Commission. Thank you, Commissioner Steiner.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. So, mayor, city council members, Arts Commission Liaison Whitman, and city staff, it's lovely to see you. We are continuing to carry out our five-year plan as Chair Smithy West has so enthusiastically described to you in the past, and he sends his apologies for not being here. And I'm going to speak with you about three matters. The first is grants, the second is music, and the third is public art. So, on grants, the application period closed September 30. I think you were advised of that last session.
Can we have quiet, please? Thank you.
There were 21 grants that were received, which is terrific. The ad hoc committee has been convened, and we look forward to its recommendations and for the Arts Commission to make an independent review of all grants, and then to make our recommendation to you. The criteria for assessment was discussed in our September Arts Commission meeting. These are artistic merit, project feasibility, impact, qualifications, alignment with grant goals, organizational capacity, that is, the ability to execute the project based on past performance, sustainability, and diversity, and inclusion. And I should note that the scoring rubric, which was also discussed at the meeting, weights more heavily artistic merit than other categories within the criteria. At our October meeting, which is next Thursday, October 18th, at 6:00 in City Hall chambers, our grantees will present. And while this presentation is not obligatory, it is highly encouraged. And also encouraged is for the applicants to bring their supporters to the meeting in order to show interest. And last year was quite a buzz, as our then Arts Liaison Lang knows from that meeting, and we look forward to the same. Next, if no questions, next I'd like to talk about music. So, one aspect that the Arts Commission has introduced is community presentations. So, we've instituted a practice at the beginning of our meetings to invite our community arts groups to present their programs, who they are, what they do.
I'm sorry, there's this huge light shining in my eye.
Well, it's probably the divine.
But I can't see anything. I'm gonna have to turn around. If you don't believe me, sit here. I'll see it.
You can see it on your face.
Oh, it's the sun. It's the sun? It's a sunset? Oh, I thought it was some light. But that's very mystical. I'm sorry.
That's very exciting. I don't want that to be coming out of my time, by the way. Okay, so I'm going to take it from the top, if I may. So, we have, we now include community presentations as a part of the Arts Commission. It's at the top of the hour for us. And community arts groups or organizations present their programs, who they are, what they do. It is, it gives an opportunity to meet the creators, for them to meet the Arts Commission, and understand who we are and who the city is. And it gives the public the opportunity to see the good work they do. It's quite successful and quite rewarding. So, last meeting, the September meeting, we were blindsided and bewildered by a last-minute instruction that the presenter, which was the Dance Ojai Group, would not have its original, that it would have its original music, which was a part of its video, muted. That is, it could not be included as a part of the video presentation. This was not a copyright issue. This was, this was not subject to written instruction or anything we could understand. As I said, we were bewildered and blindsided. So, for the creative community, it chills participation, it stifles creativity, and we look forward to understanding what this policy is about, so it can be explained to the public, and so that we will not be embarrassed in our community presentations, and the community can fully express their creativity. And then for the third matter, finally, it is a public art assessment. As you know from your budget discussions, the Arts Commission undertook the first-ever professional conservation assessment of the city's public art collections. And that assessment was completed, and we look forward to presenting it to you at our joint meeting with you, whenever that is scheduled. And that's it for my presentation.
Thank you very much, Christine. Any question?
Yes.
First of all, I look forward to Thursday night. I was there last year. It's the most lively, fun meeting of the year.
It's so great, isn't it?
It's fantastic.
Thank you.
But secondly, can you clarify what you just said about, there's a policy about muting music? Does that impact you this Thursday night?
Well, it will likely impact us at our next meeting, yes, and it impacted us certainly at the September meeting. We were told at the last minute by our staff liaison in an email to the Dance Ojai Group that they were not allowed to have their music presented. The person immediately responded to say, "This is my creative music, so there's no copyright issue here." And I know a bit about copyright, and it was clear to me that there wasn't a copyright issue. Equally, our Chair, Smithy West, is a music creator, and he knew that for this group, it was not an issue. And so, it caused a degree of consternation and distress. We simply stopped with the video and said we would seek guidance. And that guidance hasn't been forthcoming, and we would like to understand, A, is it a policy? And B, what the basis of the policy is? C, are there any exceptions? And if so, how are those applied? And D, we'd like to be able to alert the community, so they will understand, and we will understand as well.
If I, just really briefly, I had the same issue when I did a presentation. The music was not played, and it really is, from what I understood, I can say that it was copyright-free music, but until there's something official, it still puts the city at risk. That's what I understood. And I had the same experience, like, why can't you play the music? It's copyright-free. I can show you that. So, I think it's just a matter of reviewing and making sure that, you know, any copyright issues are, you know, dealt with beforehand.
No, I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I mean, that's really what it was. It was that it comes at the very last minute to the people who are projecting it, and they don't know that it's copyright-free or protected, or, you know, they don't have a way to validate copyright. So, that's what we have to work on, is making sure that there's a lead time to actually confirm, you know. I mean, they didn't take my word for it, you know.
I think you're, well, I mean, I don't know what your-
It's fine. I mean, I understood. It was okay.
Yeah. I don't know what your music is, and whether there would be sub-licenses, like master license, or synchronization licenses, or whatever it might be. But I agree with you, there ought to be more lead time to let the city understand. But I would back up and say, we should really have a policy, so we understand. So, lead time, I agree. And then, you know, it may be appropriate to have some sort of indemnification, or some such, you know, whatever.
Agreed.
But, but lack of understanding and lack of writing only causes confusion and distress.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if I could jump in, thank you, Commissioner Steiner, mayor and council, and the community, and our commission liaisons and commissioners present. We have a longstanding policy that requires 24 or 48 hours' notice in advance, and is designed to protect the city from a very real consequence we've experienced, which is videos that YouTube thinks is copyrighted or are copyrighted pulling down. So, they have pulled down our meeting videos from YouTube, which is our present online meeting video storage site. We are putting in place several things to solve this. One is a written policy is forthcoming. That will be very clear on these issues.
Great. That's great.
That's forthcoming. We'll circulate it once it's issued by the city manager under his authority. And second, we are in the process of looking at some software solutions to have something other than YouTube host our videos, which would solve that concern of YouTube deciding on their own with not much appeal process to pull things down. So, two steps, both in process. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Marvelous. That's, that's news to all of us, and it's, and it's music to our ears, literally.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Steiner. Good one. Okay. Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for all that you and the other commissioners are doing. I'm really looking forward to the next meeting, because last year, and I encourage everybody to go and watch it. If you want to fall even more in love with this community, go and watch the arts grant presentations. And on that note, I just really also wanted to apologize for, for past miscommunications and past misunderstandings, and, and that surrounded the granting process. And I look forward to writing some of those, some of those things this, this time, and, and working in collaboration with the Commission.
Thank you. We, we expect a much smoother grants process this year, and we look forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Right, with that, we will move on to public communications. And just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda, so we cannot discuss them. We can agendize them for the future. So, let's begin with Kristi Rivera. Then we have Starchild and then Andy Gilman.
So, good evening, mayor, council, staff, and community. I'm here tonight, Kristi Rivera. I am the Public Information Officer and Events Coordinator for the City of Ojai, and I'm here to present our 2024 Ojai Day poster winner and the original artwork. So, this is the artist winner, Dominic Bro, and his painting, which is Soul Park Rocket.
Oh, I love it.
And there's the poster on the, on the.
Oh, yes. Well, I've always been in love with this structure, and when I moved to Ojai, I'd been schlepping this canvas around, wasn't sure what to paint on it. And the vertical format really lent itself. So, so, it came about, and I always thought this would be a great poster for Ojai Day. This refreshing change from the arches, and the topa-topas, and the matila-ha-papi. And it's sort of an unsung hero. Everyone's nostalgic that sees it, and it just reels them back. And I think it might be one of the last ones standing. So, Soul Park Rocket deserves to be immortalized. And I'm totally honored to have been chosen and to represent. So, I'm super grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dominic. It's beautiful. And, yeah, Kristi?
We'll also have posters in the back for anybody attending that would like an Ojai Day poster.
Oh, fantastic.
Thank you.
Got it. Nice. It's official. I spent a lot of time playing Power Rangers in that thing with my kids. Really fun. Thank you. Immortalized forever. Okay, next we have Starchild, then Andy Gilman, and then Ron Salarseno.
Good afternoon. Several times before, I've come to you during public comments to talk about affordable housing, and I've realized that I haven't had a chance to talk about the environment. And so, I want to talk to you about how affordable housing could help the environment here in Ojai and throughout the world. There are a couple, a couple of reasons that I can think of. One is that in California, we have stringent environmental regulations for building housing that reduce the carbon footprint. And if, also, we have mild weather, I can think back to when I grew up in Minnesota, how much carbon we must have used just to try and keep the temperature in a reasonable range. And so, when we build more housing here in Ojai, and we allow people to stay here, I think about Nora Harold, who's somebody who came to speak and said that she had to move to Chicago because she couldn't afford housing in the region. I think about how much more carbon it's going to take to keep her warm than if she would have been able to stay here in our valley. The other thing that can happen is when we allow more density, we can allow some of the old housing that doesn't have insulation to be demolished, and the new housing that replaces it can reduce our carbon footprint even more. Another reason entirely different is that if we could ever have people who live in Ojai, or, sorry, people who work in Ojai be able to live in Ojai, they wouldn't have to drive so far, wouldn't have to use so much gas to be able to get here to work every day. If we had more density and people could live maybe closer to downtown, they wouldn't have to drive downtown, try and fight for parking. They could live and play in the same place. And the third reason that I think we should have more density in housing here in Ojai is that per household, it would use, there would be less landscaping, and there would be less demand on our water resources as a result. And so, for all those reasons, I'd like you to think about more, or I think about less housing regulation and building more housing, especially affordable housing, as a way to positively impact our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Starchild. Next we have Andy Gilman, then Ron Salarseno, and then Payman Repeljma, nay, maybe.
Good evening, council and staff. I just want to register again what I said last time at the meeting, which is that I hope at some point you will adopt a process where, if you have items on the agenda that continue to postpone, or that there is a pressing need, for example, and ethics guidelines, and a budget review committee, that other items that come in that do not have a pressing need, like a timeline, such as the animal ordinances that we're seeing on the, the agenda tonight, those get moved after the pressing things. That continues to be an issue, that, that you have interests that get in the way of the things that most of the community thinks are not the central business of the government, where these other things are. So, I hope that you will adopt that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And just a note to the public, we are having a special meeting on Monday to talk about code of ethics and the budget. Next we have Ron Salarseno, and then Payman.
All righty. Thank you, members of council. My name is Ron Salarseno. I am the Regional Librarian for the Ojai Valley. I come here often talking about some of the things we have going on at the library, and actually, one of our groups that meets there, the Ukulele Club, asked that I share with you all some information about that group. The volunteer who leads it, her name is Debbie, gave me the following to read to you all. So, here we go. "The Ojai Library's Ukulele Group started in 2018, and has between 15 and 20 consistent members who currently meet from 10:00 a.m. to noon on Mondays at the Ojai Library. Each member brings tunes to the group and plays music from the 1920s to the present. Most are retired from all walks of life, but some younger members have joined and loved the camaraderie. The youngest member is a college student who brings refreshing jokes to the group every Monday morning. The group has become very popular in Ojai and has marched and played in the Ojai's July 4th Parade. They've played for crowds at Ojai Day, for the Holiday Home Tour, at the Continuing Care Center at the Ojai Hospital, for the Artist in Residence Bravo Program in Ojai Elementary Schools, and they've opened for the Ojai Film Society Summer Film Series at Libby Bowl recently during the screening of Back to the Future. The group loves playing music together and sharing their voices and harmonies. Look forward to a great time when you hear this talented, fun-loving music group." So, to me personally, when the volunteer who runs this group came to me initially all those years ago, it just, it sounded like such a great thing, such a community-driven thing, and I'm so glad that we were able to say yes, and that they've been successful for so long. So, just wanted to share a nice little success story for some of the, what we have going on there at the library. I also really quickly wanted to once again plug something that I believe I mentioned last time, which is the upcoming Ventura County Celebration of Books, which is going to be happening at the California State University Channel Islands campus on Saturday, October 12th. So, this Saturday. It's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's going to include exhibitors from the literary community in the county. It's going to include food trucks, the first 150 servings of which will be free. It's going to have children's activities, including our mobile library and storytime. And then, at 11:00 a.m., there's going to be a panel on the state of homelessness in Ventura County moderated by KCal News anchor Amy Johnson. Then, at 2:00 p.m. is going to be our featured keynote with Dr. Jim O'Connell, who is the subject of the book Rough Sleepers, which is this year's community read. So, we hope you're able to join us on Saturday, October 12th. And if you have any questions or need more information, come see us at the library. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Much appreciate. Yep, question?
Could you repeat the title of this year's book?
Yes. The title for this year's book is Rough Sleepers?
Rough Sleepers.
Rough Sleepers. Yeah, sorry, we've got a little mic issue. And the author is Tracy Kidder. And yeah, to clarify, the gentleman who's speaking is Dr. Jim O'Connell. He is the subject of the book. And yeah, hopefully, we'll see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Much appreciate. Next we have Payman. Will you tell me how to pronounce your last name?
My name is Payman, and my last name is Roh Pei Mai.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, I received one citation for $70,000. I have one property in Ojai for three units, and I got $70,000 citation. And my request is to have an administrative hearing, because I passed that 30 days. I calculate 30 days after, because originally was $100,000, and they changed it to $70,000. And I calculate that one after I receive the second one, or waive that citation, because I haven't received any warning or anything until I got one letter from collection company, because the letter which was sent to me was certified, and I wasn't in place to sign and get that one. And all those letters returned to the city, but I received $100,000 from like a collection company. And I find out the problem, which, because I rent the property in Airbnb, because I didn't know the rules of 30 days. The minutes I find out, I stop all of them. I send all this information to the city and talk with the Lucas back and forth many times. But right now, I don't have that option to do the administrative hearing to explain all the detail, what exactly happened. I upload all the document, even back and forth with the city, to the city consular website. And I try to come and talk in person to see how can I solve this issue. I already stopped everything, but I cannot pay like a $70,000. And I really didn't know. I understand I have to know as a person who wants to leave here all the rules. But I was thinking Airbnb is a website. They, they know how to do that, like any kind of the website, because each city has their own rule and regulation. And I just got that property. I got that property with loan, and after that, I did the construction with like a hard money. And it's really hard for me to even pay or think about that. And I really want to have administrative hearing or waive this amount, because I didn't receive any letter, and I didn't know. And the minutes I find out, I went to the city many times until today.
All right. Thank you, Payman. Just, we can't comment on this because it's not on the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, that's correct. The council can't comment on the matter. It's not on their agenda tonight. I believe staff has been in contact with you, and certainly will reach out again regarding the options to pay the fines as imposed as part of the city's enforcement of our structural violation ordinance.
Can I just talk in a nice second?
Sure.
And I just got my certificate of occupancy, and a lot of people here, they knew my phone number and email, and I didn't, yeah, I didn't get any email or-
Okay. All right. Thank you, Payman. Thank you very much. Any, any comments online?
Yes, mayor. We have Karina W. and Katrina Reich Schmidt. Karina, if you're ready.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. A couple of things. One, completely random, I just want to put a plug in to the city council, to the city staff. Please, somehow, can we get a splash pad for the Libby Park Playground? I don't know why we don't have one, but we sure could use one. The kids could use one, and just want to put that in somebody's ear, so that that might happen down the line. Secondly, want to draw everyone's attention to the Ojai Studio Artist Tours that are happening this weekend. It's three days, and there are 60 open art studios of members of the Ojai Studio Artists, and it is a high point of the Southern California Arts Calendar. And this tour attracts lots of collectors, and designers, and other curious creatives. And I just want to make sure everybody knows about it, and to go to their website, ojaisstudioartists.org, and buy their tickets, and participate in this incredible art event in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina.
Katrina, if you're ready?
Hi there. My name's Katrina Schmidt, and I'm with the Ojai Valley Tennis Club. And we are running a tournament on October 19th and 20th, and that just happens to be Ojai Day. We know that, and we've, we've warned all our applicants that the road will be closed. They have to take the back way. But today, we learned that the pickleball community, I think it's Tim Kraut, is putting up a fuss, because he planned to put an exhibition during Ojai Day on the tennis courts. Well, that's very upsetting, because we are running this tournament. It's a U.S., United States Tennis Association sanctioned event. We secured the courts properly, in the proper channels, way back in August, and actually before that. And we have our schedule of matches set for Libby Park, Ovac and Wile, and Nordoff High School. And we just learned today that Tim Kraut is taking two of our courts for pickleball. The, the staff there may not know that the Ojai Valley Tennis Club has a city council resolution that says that the tennis club has priority for its events. And specifically, there's signs on the tennis courts that say, "There shall be no pickleball on the tennis courts." So, why are we, in the last hour, our registration closes next week, being told that we can't have two of our eight tennis courts for tennis? We're a tennis organization, running a tennis tournament for tennis players, and we are being told at the last hour that we cannot have two of our courts- And we are being told at the last hour that we cannot have two of our courts. It's really, really unacceptable. And I hope to get some city council support for the tennis community who is going through the proper channels to get our courts and to run our tournament and just use our tennis courts for tennis. Very upsetting. So anyway, if any of the city council members can help us out with getting the courts that we reserved way back in August and even before that, talking to the city rec department, that would be really helpful because we need those courts. Thank you. We reserve them and they're already spoken for. So please help.
Thank you. Thank you, Katrina. Mr. City Manager?
So we're aware of the situation. Mr. Kraut, for the last four years, has had a pickleball demonstration at the courts and had signed up to do it again this year. He signed up some time ago. We transitioned over to a new reservation system, a new electronic reservation system. And unfortunately, it didn't catch that two of the courts were occupied for Ojai Day. So we're in a situation where we have to compromise. I don't really see a whole lot of options. Both parties, you know, have gone through the appropriate channels and it's, it's, you know, it's the way it is this year unless one wants to move somewhere else and both want to remain where they are. And so again, it won't happen going forward. We'll be able to modify the software so that we don't have that gap. But that's a casualty of that this year and we do apologize.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, we have one more public comment. Leah Hesey, is that? Heck, sorry. Hi.
Just told him not. Okay, so I read your Smokey Dog Face reading.
No, no, okay. This is general public comment?
I know, but I wanted to suggest something instead of that. And so I was just told that might be more public comment.
Could you wait to item number three?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Four.
Yeah, we'll get you in there. Thank you. All right, that's it, Bridgette?
Yes, Mayor, there's no more race chants.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to item number two, ratify point. Oh, thank you very much. Moving right along. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? I'll move to approve. In a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, wonderful. We will now move on to item number two. Ratify appointment to one vacant seat and three reappointments to new term on the Planning Commission meeting in November. Or two, actually. We have a staff report?
Briefly, Madam Mayor. So on this one, we had, the agenda still lists four vacancies. Of course, as the commission, the council is aware, at the prior meeting, we, the council appointed new planning commissioner, Robert Graham. So that seat is solved. There are three remaining open seats or seats to be reappointed or appointed as applicable at the end of a term. The committees, we went through the new committee process as the council is familiar with. And the outcome is to recommend reappointment of Commissioner Bennett and Jamie Bennett and Commissioner John Trent. And then for Commissioner Steve Quilisi, there, the committee had recommended his reappointment as well. On that front, as was discussed somewhat last time and in detail now, staff recommends not reappointing Mr. Quilisi and instead going back through the process to consider alternative options, given two incompatible offices issues. One is the conflict between Mr. Quilisi's role as a planning commissioner and his elected role as this Ojai Valley Sanitation District Board Director. And second, the incompatible offices issue regarding his expected swearing into the city clerk's office, assuming the election goes the way we expect because he's the only one on the ballot, and then takes the oath if offered the seat. And planning commissioner, that conflict as well. Given those two conflicts, one present, one expected to occur, staff recommends not reappointing Mr. Quilisi. It is, of course, the council's choice. The last, closing the triangle as to Mr. Quilisi, three offices. The last leg is not a problem. City Clerk and Sanitary Board Director. Our conclusion is summarized in the staff report is that that's not an incompatible office. Happy to answer any questions on that quick report. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Francina?
Yeah, I have several questions. I think this is going to be a very interesting discussion. So I'd like to start by looking at the ordinance that I think that this council adopted June 11, 2024. And throughout the ordinance in at least four places, there is language that says, for example, on page one, and then if you, you know, go down to number one, it says, "As determined by the city clerk." That text appears four or five times throughout the ordinance. And then my question is, why doesn't it, if you're going to keep that language, I'd like to see that language removed. But I also don't understand why it doesn't say Deputy City Clerk. Because in truth, in reality, it's the Deputy City Clerk not that, that is under the city manager and it's not the elected city clerk. My experience and my 12 years on the council, only time I really see the elected city clerk is when she swears me in. Other than that, I rarely see her. So in order to have a discussion about whether or not there is a conflict of interest, we need to distinguish between Deputy City Clerk, which would usually be Weston, and is it still Cynthia Burrell?
Presently, yes.
Yes, okay.
So having to clarify that, the code is written to reflect the elected position, the city clerk. Ms. Burrell, the present city clerk and several past clerks have chosen to delegate most of their roles to the employee Deputy City Clerk. There is no requirement that they delegate, that they choose to make that delegation. The next clerk could choose to run that nomination calculation, nomination order selection themselves and retain it at the elected level. The council could amend the ordinance to have instead of the city clerk, it be the Deputy City Clerk or presently Chief Deputy City Clerk or another employee or city manager. The council could amend the ordinance to remove that conflict on that front if the council so chose. That's not on tonight's agenda. That would be a future agenda item to reamend the planning commission ordinance further. And then the second thing I would note, as was discussed in the staff report, we identify a second potential conflict that I want the council to be aware of. One is the city clerk's role in the planning commission appointment process, which that amendment would erase. Second is a significant potential for a clash of duties and loyalties because the city clerk has a significant role in the city council's election process. And that is the elected city clerk position, as long as there is an elected city clerk. Mindful, of course, the delegation often occurs to the deputy city clerk.
So my, my memory might be fuzzy, but I don't, I know that I approved this ordinance because, and at the time, that language looked innocent. I didn't think it was, would be an issue. But I don't remember any of us, was there a discussion of what, or why, why was that language, that text inserted?
As I recall, it wasn't a lengthy discussion. But the council's focus on having the clerk determine the order of rotation was to take it out of the council. So it's not the council deciding among themselves and not have it be someone who reports to the council. So have it be not the manager. But of course, it's a choice. It could be the manager. It could be the, take it from the elected clerk and shift it to the Chief Deputy Clerk or shift it to the manager or put it back to the council. Any of those are valid options as the ordinance may be amended as the council may choose.
So...
Well, I can wait. We can do a round and then I may have other questions or somebody else might ask.
Question, Councilmember? That was just, it was just a clarifying question to summarize that basically if we were to change this ordinance from city clerk to deputy chief city clerk, it would eliminate both of those conflicts. Is that correct?
No, only one of the two, as I see it. It wouldn't eliminate the second conflict that we identified, which is the elected city clerk's role in the city council's election process. And there are duties that the elected city clerk has in the election process that are not, the council doesn't have the power to delegate those in full. The clerk has the power to delegate them if the clerk so chooses, but the council can't force the clerk to delegate them.
And what would those be?
Those duties include processing application, processing candidate statements, processing applications, interfacing with the candidates as they seek reelection or appointment as applicable, swearing them in, and other associate, and campaign finance statement filings.
Okay, so I would just mention that all of those are done by the deputy chief city clerk and was done by his predecessor before that. The city clerk, I think as Councilmember Francina indicated, I remember doing all of that and it was never done with the city clerk. It was always done with, she wasn't the deputy city clerk, but none of those have been done by the city clerk to date. So you're saying that those could be, the city council could not delegate that to the chief, to the chief deputy city clerk? Only the city clerk could delegate that to the...
Right. The clerk chooses to, or has often chosen to delegate their elections duties to the staff, to the deputy or chief deputy city clerk. But that's the clerk's choice to delegate. It's not a choice that, as I see, the council can make for the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
And just...
Nope. Mayor Pretend?
Yeah, I mean, just for clarification, I don't think it's correct that Weston has done, excuse me, or Deputy City Clerk has done everything independently because I've had personal experience with him telling me that he needs to review with the city clerk before he signs off or makes a final determination or something.
Right, and we often see that in the more, for want of a better word, complicated aspects of the clerk's elections role. We are mindful of a number of past experiences where the clerk had a choice to process or not process an initiative or referendum as elected clerk. The staff, deputy city clerk or clerk or chief deputy would take in the paperwork, but then consult with the elected clerk as the elected clerk made the decision to process or not process something, which impacted in some past cases, impacted the city council's policy goals, one way or the other, by processing or not processing depending on the city, elected city clerk's choices as to how they saw the elections laws regarding initiatives and referenda being complied with or not, which actually is a further, so the elections process isn't just the city council elections process, it's also the city elections process. Where we've seen in the past, policy conflict between the elected city clerk and majority of the elected city council on initiative and referenda, which creates that possibility of a conflict of offices or a conflict of duties and clash of loyalties because an elected city clerk would have potentially competing roles. Do they do what their voters as elected clerk want and very strictly enforce initiatives and referendum and elections law? Or do they do what their overlords as the, or their appointing authority, sorry, retract. Appointing authority as council. But in the end, it's the council is appointing the planning commission. Do they do what their appointing authority wants as planning commissioner? Are they unduly influenced in their role as city clerk by their thought or concern for their role as planning commissioner underneath the city council? That's the concern that we identify. Thank you.
Okay, all right, questions, council?
Yeah, so you've explained the reason you put this text in here. So what, when it comes down in another hour or so, when it comes time to make motions, what is the result of removing, removing that text? Oh, what, did I say something really crazy? Well, you know, there's all... I foresee this is a complex and very interesting situation. So what are the consequences if that text was removed?
So the text regarding, in the planning commission ordinance regarding the city clerk's role in the planning commission nomination process. If that text was erased and replaced with something else, that doesn't erase the conflict I just mentioned regarding the elections process. That continues to be a concern.
No, but it's, but it wouldn't, it was, but, but are you saying that it's still, it's still a legal, it's, there's, there's nothing, we can't, the council, if they so choose, could remove that text?
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
Yes, not tonight. But yeah, the council can amend the planning commission ordinance at will to change the planning commission nomination process. Absolutely, with the right agenda items, three votes.
Then my, my other question is, like in the past, if there is a conflict of interest, a conflict like, say that Mr. Quilisi is on the planning commission, usually there's, there's the, the option to recuse yourself. But I know that Mr. Quilisi, I was, I'm used to calling him Chair Quilisi because he's been the chair for so long. He is meticulous about obeying the law and recusing himself. So is that, that's not an option to remove that conflict of interest?
Not for an incompatible offices situation. Recusal typically works in a political reform act where we have a, a single commissioner or council member has a financial conflict in a decision. They can recuse and the decision can still go forward, subject to a whole bunch of exceptions that were the training the other day. But for an incompatible offices situation, the problem is inherent in holding the two offices. So recusal is not a solution.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lang?
Thank you. So I have a similar line of questions about the sanitary, sanitary district board. What would the conflict of interest between those two offices be?
So on that one, there is an attorney general opinion on point that concluded, and I'll quote, "There are myriad possibilities for influence and exchange between a planning commission and a local district that lies within the planning commission's territory." Where the district owns property, runs facilities in the city, is a consumer of the city's services as district. So there's that loyalty clash between your obligations to the district, managing it and running its services, trying to reduce costs, increase service levels, and how that may conflict with your role as a planning commissioner trying to implement the city council and planning commission's general plan and policies. So that conflict, the attorney general found directly on point in the, the cases and citation. And I'll note on that one, if some may raise a question, there is a special statute that exempted city council and sanitary board district director positions. But that special statute does not apply to planning commissioner, as was discussed in that AG opinion, which sort of further affirms that there is a conflict because otherwise they wouldn't have had to adopt a special statute. But notably, the legislature's special statute only exempts city council and sanitation board director, not planning commissioner and sanitation board director. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That doesn't make any sense to me at all. You know, that it would exempt city council but not...
I mean, to an extent, there's a policy argument that the legislature should have extended the exemption down, but they did not do so and I never look to Sacramento for logic.
So this case, I have it here, that's from 2012, back when Kamala Harris was the attorney general. That's why her name looks so familiar.
Yep, one of her prior offices.
And it is, was in Costa Mesa. And it seems like the conclusion on the front page is, is kind of vague. It says whether the offices of director, you know, I don't want to read the, whether... Anyway, accordingly, the application for leave to sue is granted. I mean, what does that all mean? Whether, it doesn't, it's not a, it doesn't seem like it's, it's just, what's the word, decisive? It just seems like it's still up in the air.
Now, I would not characterize it that way. So in the coram process, which is the process by which a public official is removed from office, it has two steps. The first step is the attorney general issues an opinion finding that there is an incompatible office situation in this context and that justice requires a matter go forward. And then issues the opinion, which is the first step to filing the lawsuit. Then someone goes and files the lawsuit. So the attorney general's opinion is definitive. The AG opinion does not remove the person from office. That takes a court. But on the law, the AG is definitive unless a court overrules it later on the law on those issues. And the next question you'll ask is, well, could a different attorney general rule differently? Theoretically, yes, we see other contexts where courts will overturn settled precedent. And so that's possible. But we have, no law, relevant law has changed since 2012. So we're not anticipating that the attorney general will rule differently if they were presented the question again.
And my final question is, the council has the sole discretion to remove any planning commissioner at any time without any cause. And likewise, does the city council, if they decide after digesting all of this and mulling it over, to, to not remove the planning commissioner, at least not at this time, to see, you know, that's, is that still a legal option? I mean, we're not, are you...
Yeah, the council can do as the council may wish. And I want to clarify one point. It's not removal. It's whether to reappoint or not reappoint. Commissioner Quilisi and along with the other commissioners, their terms have expired. They continue in their role because the ordinance provides that everyone continues until a successor is appointed and sworn in. But it's not about removal. I realize the net effect is the same, but I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Because the newly done ordinance from June and before has a process for removal that was discussed at length previously. And that process doesn't apply because it's not removal, it's reappointment or not reappointment. And the council can do as the council may wish, obviously. The council can make an appointment and then it would be up to anybody who may have concerns to begin the coram process if they so chose.
Okay, thank you. That's a nice and clear... Okay, thank you. That's nice and clear.
Any final questions?
I do, yeah, this is, once again, a clarifying question. So when you go to the AG, the first thing you get is an approval to sue. And then, does the AG issue a preliminary decision on whether or not your suit will win? I mean, the, you get the approval to sue, but does the AG also weigh in on whether or not they feel, you get the question?
Yes, it's the same document. So the, all of the attorney general's opinions that we're been citing, those are the document at which the attorney general gives you permission to sue or not, and weighs in on whether they ca, they think the case is an incompatible office or not. So it's one document that gives both.
Okay, so if the AG did not believe that it was incompatible, they would not give permission to sue? Is that correct?
Correct.
So they do weigh in, but it's not a final judgment. They say, "We are allowing you to sue because we believe that fundamentally you have a good case, so go for it." Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
In the AG opinion process, looks at two questions. One is, is there an incompatible office in the AG's assessment? And two, is it in the interest of justice for the case to go forward?
Right.
Typically, if they find that there is an incompatible offices situation, they will find it in the interest of justice to go forward. But I note that there are two questions the AG has to answer. The second thing I'll note is, is I think inherent in your question, can you ask the AG for an opinion separate from the coramenter process? Separate, because the coramenter process, you ask the attorney general for an opinion, and you have to state, as part of it, typically it's, we believe someone's holding an office improperly. So if you want to just ask the question as opposed to ask, there is a process by which an attorney general opinion request can be filed. That process requires state constitutional officers, state elected officials, and certain local officials that do not include anyone in this room have the power to ask the attorney general for an advisory opinion on any matter of law. If a city wants to do that, typically the city goes to the assembly member or the state senator, they have the power to ask the AG, and then the AG will do what they will.
Okay, and I have one final question. And it was an important one, so let me, I have to channel it. It was an important question. God, okay, I'm gonna, oh, this was it. So under city clerk, every city has different responsibilities for their city clerk. I mean, we have, for all intents and purposes, a ceremonial city clerk who most of the day-to-day and, and the elections operations have all been handled by a staff member, right? So, in other words, what I'm saying is, when you do a request to the AG, and my Latin is bad, which is why I'm not saying the words pro warranto-
That's fine.
Even though I took Latin in high school. Are you delineating the different responsibilities that the city clerk has? In other words, you could say city clerk, but, but the responsibilities of different city clerks are different. Therefore, when you're actually getting an opinion of what is incompatible, are you looking at the actual jobs that they do or responsibilities that they have? Or are you just looking at the title that they carry and assuming a whole bunch of stuff underneath? So that's my other question. Does the AG look at spec, at specific things that this city clerk does versus, you know, what Oxnard city clerk might do? Or are they looking at only the title city clerk, right? So that's my question to you.
So if the city were to direct us to file a request to the attorney general, we would explain the statutory role the clerk, the elected city clerk has, and the on-the-ground role our elected and deputy city clerks have typically placed. Mindful that there's a difference, you're right. Lots of elected city clerks run some, all, or none of the parts of their job, and that varies heavily by city and by culture and by community. So if we were to do a request to the attorney general, if directed by the council, we would absolutely lay out our, all of our facts. The past AG opinions look at the facts in those particular places.
Okay, great, thank you. So it, that, that answers my questions. Thank you very much. And so, one final question. The council could basically reconfigure the ordinances to accurately reflect what the city clerk has done. Like, for instance, this ordinance that says a city clerk does this, but in fact, the deputy city clerk does this. So if we were to change an ordinance here to accurately represent who does what, then when you, if we were to do a quo warranto, then it would be best to align our ordinances with what we're actually saying is being done. In other words, if you put the ordinance as a city clerk does this, well, the city clerk doesn't do that. So it would be smarter for us to get our ducks in a row and change an ordinance to accurately reflect what is done by the city clerk versus what is done by the deputy city clerk.
You're right, that would be a pathway. If we wanted to clarify the planning, planning commission appointment process, we could reflect that it's the deputy city clerk or chief deputy.
I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if the steps were to be taken, in which, which order they would be taken, and would it be wise for us to be consistent in what we say the deputy city clerk does, what we say the city clerk does if we were indeed to move forward in any way? Thank you.
The other thing I'll add on that point is, the AG's analysis may, it would turn on the text of our ordinance, so we could posit, depending on the order of operations and direction from council, we could posit if the ordinance says this, if it says that, where is the answer? They often avoid giving what they call advisory opinions, where the facts are uncertain. So we, but we'd sort through that if there was direction to ask the AG.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protam?
Yeah, so just for clarification, it's not the attorney general that issues a writ of quo warranto, it's a judge.
Right, so the attorney general issues the opinion that allows those lawsuits seeking the writ of coramenter to go forward. The writ itself is what removes somebody from office.
And, and when they write their permission to pursue the quo warranto, they're actually, you know, not just telling the person they can go forward, but they're telling the judge, who's going to rule on it, what they believe the law to be and how it applies to those set of facts.
Yes, and that's why the opinions, the authority to go file a lawsuit is paired with a lengthy opinion explaining why the AG sees the matter. And I'll note, as was also, I think, put in the staff report, typically, when the coramenter opinion is issued, most, most, we did put it in the staff report, page three, middle of the page, typically, once an opinion is issued by the attorney general that's, that allows a suit to go forward, people will resign from one or the other to keep whichever office they'd rather have. And that's why there's not as much court of appeal case law on these issues, because once the attorney general's opined, people tend to go with that.
Yeah, but as our law reads currently, in terms of what the clerk's legal authority is, it would be consistent with this decision by the, or the opinion by the AG that there is a incompatible office problem between a sanitation district member or board member and a planning commission member.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yep, another question?
Yeah, just clarifying. But we would, in, in anything that we presented to the AG, specify what the actual duties. That was my question to you, what the actual duties are versus what the ordinance says. Because I think, as, as Councilmember Francina pointed out, you know, city clerk here is encompassing everything that the city clerk does or doesn't do, as well as what the deputy city clerk does, so.
Yeah, if we were to bring an opinion forward, we would give the attorney general the full picture.
Thank you, that's, I just wanted to, to clarify that, that we would, that would-
Okay, we will move on to public comments then. First, we have Steve Quillis, then Brian Akins, and then Christine Steiner? You wanted to comment? Okay, nope. Okay, and then Andy Gilman.
Good evening. I've been honored to serve on the Ojai Planning Commission for eight years, providing a service to the community based on following the law and on personal honesty and integrity. I agree it's your sole discretion to remove any commissioner anytime for any reason. It would be a shame to see my service end based on the insinuations in this staff report. One, that I might in the past have done anything illegal or unethical by serving as a planning commissioner and a sanitary district board member. Two, that the new city clerk, presumably me, will have some improper influence over planning commission appointments. I find these personally insulting. One, I spoke with the city attorney six years ago about the sanitary district before I filed for election. He noted the attorney general opinion, opinion not law, that is cited in the staff report, saying it allowed for litigating the question of a conflict, but he said to me, and I quote directly, "Go ahead and run, see if anyone cares." No one has cared, but suddenly, my dual service seems to be a sin. Two, I spoke with the city attorney this August before filing for clerk. We disagree on the specifics of his advice, but he did not mention selecting the rotating council member for a nomination, and until tonight, has said nothing about a conflict with council elections. I asked the sanitary district general counsel for a second opinion, and he told me there was no real conflict. Now, six or seven months ago, we began interviewing applicants for a planning commission vacancy, which we're all familiar with, assuming the process for selecting that rotating council member that would nominate was the same as before, and that the city clerk had no role in it. The mayor, member Rule, and I did at least six interviews this way. Unknown to us at the time, city ordinance 946 changed that, technically giving the city clerk a minor role. This alleged conflict is something created recently by this council and could easily be undone. To date, the clerk has had no role in any of these appointments. If the city clerk had attempted to inject herself into the process, we would have had some very unhappy council members. I commend your appointment.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Brian Akins, then Andy Gilman, then Jeffrey Starkweather. Thank you. Uh, council, I, I agree.
That'd be reasonable.
Okay, 20 seconds, yep.
Thank you. I commend your appointment of Bobby Graham. I favor the appoint, the reappointment of both John Trent and Jamie Bennett. They are honorable, diligent, and reasoned in their consideration of cases. They're a credit to the commission. Last, I commend your assistant city attorney, Taylor Anderson. She is unafraid to say to planning commissioners, "You shouldn't say that, or you shouldn't discuss that," keeping us legal and ethical.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Brian Akins, then Andy Gilman, then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Hello, Chair. I am Brian Akins. I am here as a chair of a commission, not a specific commission, just as the chair of a commission. I've been on that commission for 10 years. I have been the chair for the last six years. I understand exactly what it takes in order to be a chair, to keep your commission focused, to keep your commission staffed, to moving forward. All through those six years, I've worked closely with a commission, or Chair Quillis, he's still the chair, on questions that I had or even parts where I had to be talked down off the roof. He's been helpful for me. When my son grew up, as soon as he could play, I entered him into Little League. I shortly thereafter, go figure, became the president of the Little League, because I wanted the best program to hap, happen. I told the people there, we were playing by the rulebook, not by the good old boys. That tends to happen, and went forward with that. So as president, oftentimes, I would have parents that would come up to me and say, "Hey, can't you just make an exception to the rules?" And I always had a rulebook in my back pocket. I also umpired Little League for 20-plus years for two generations. And I knew what they might be able to do, but I thought they should learn. So I gave them the rulebook. I said, "Go look at this and come back to me next week, and let's talk." And they came back to me and they had some questions and suggestions. And so we found a way in the rules to make things go forward, make the experience happy, enjoyable. In this document that I've been going through over the last days, I see a lot of stop signs. I see a lot of impediments, not a lot of, "Well, this is how we can make it work." All of us are reading through this, we've done the things I asked the parents. I would like to see some of the things that has been talked about today on the positive end, finding a way to go forward, some of the suggestions from the workers. I, I truly appreciate having Steve as a co-chair, being able to work with him, being able to ask questions, being able to find paths on going forward, and would truly miss him and not having him. As I attend planning commission meetings often, just like I did last week, anything that has anything to do with historic, so I have a lot of experience going to planning commissions. In my closing minutes, I would just like to remind you that the Ojai Day is coming up on the 19th, and at 11 o'clock and 2 o'clock in the afternoon noon, we will have the Ventura County Ghost Hunter with us, and he's bringing his defining rods, so come see us.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Andy Gilman, then Jeffrey Starkweather, then Larry Steingold.
It seems to me, we try very hard to be polite, and sometimes it's better just to be frank, and I think it's this. This body has spent hours trying to reconfigure the planning commission to get commissioners on that match your values. And we keep being thwarted by it. You, you try to circumvent the normal way, and then it comes back to this. And it seems to me, the value or the concern is not exposure here. It's the opportunity to try to get Steve not on the commission again, and so that you can appoint somebody that's more aligned with your values. So what I would suggest is that you take the time, make a motion to figure out how Steve could be reappointed. That could happen on the next time. And let's not pretend that it means something different than that. Thanks.
Jeffrey Starkweather, thank you, Andy. Next, Jeffrey Starkweather, then Larry Steingold, then Bill Miley.
I want to thank Andy for his statement, because I don't have to say it, because that's exactly what I would have started with. I think we're starting with a gigantic misunderstanding of what planning commissioners legally are responsible to do. Mr. Whitman's statement, what he wanted to influence the planning commissioner would be illegal. Planning commissioners have a duty to follow the code, and when they have applicants, they look at the facts and they follow the code. Now theoretically, I say theoretically, because I was on there for a year, the planning commission could make land use recommendations to you. We never got a chance to do that. In fact, we made a commitment, as a city, in our housing element, to do that with the promise, which we still have, we've had it for a couple cycles, that we were going to review our land use regulations to eliminate barriers to affordable housing, and we have a ton of them. We've never even got the chance to discuss that. So this whole thing that somehow we can get planners on there that are carry out some kind of philosophical or ideological views of city commissioners, I think is just wrong. That's not what we do up there. And I know Mr. Quillis was one of the best people at making sure we stuck to the code. I, as someone who had done land use law, made sure of that, and all of us were very careful to follow. Now, sometimes we did discuss ideas about how we could change things. But that came after we made our ruling following the law. So this notion that the election might be swayed by the clerk, planning commissioners concerned regarding staying with the city council's favor in the planning commission. Jesus, if that's what we're doing on our planning commission, we are going in the wrong direction here, folks. Planning commission should be treating everybody the same, following our code. It's your job to create the code, not the planning commission. They have to follow it. So let's just stop, this is just a gigantic, it's been an embarrassment to this city. We started in March in 2022 when Mr. Whitman first brought this up. We've gone through so much, of course, I went through the middle of it, obviously, but that's irrelevant. We have spent all this time, all this effort, our attorney's time, and I would say if we have a conflict- And I would say, if we have a conflict, it's between the attorney and the city council and the deputy city clerk. Because I've dealt with the city clerk in election years probably as much as anybody. The city deputy city clerk doesn't go to the clerk to get advice. He goes to the city attorney. And we had that mess with the valet parking, where our city clerk ruled against it, and somehow we...
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Bill Miley.
Hi, Larry Steingold. Thank you. I support the reappointment of Jamie Bennett and Commissioner Trent. I also go to planning meetings, unlike most of the other people who have wanted to be on the planning committee for the last two or three years, also who want to be on city council. If you're going to want to participate, show up. Steve Quillacy shows up along with everybody else. You're being a little disingenuous. If you don't want the man, appoint him and then fire him. Doesn't that make it easier? Then we don't have to go through all this, because you can fire a city appointment anytime, correct? Anytime for any reason. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? That's what I've been told, and that's what we've heard. So just reappoint the man. We don't have to go through this. And then you fire him, and then he'll be city clerk, and then he won't have any conflict. He can run the clerk's office the way he wants to. Would you rather have that? Because now he's going to be the city clerk. And you've already said, there's all sorts of potential conflicts and things that he can do. He can put his stick in the spokes of elections, of anything, right? Because he can, or he can ask the district clerk to do it, whatever the case may be. He's now the city clerk. Wouldn't you want him on the planning commission? Because now he's under the microscope, and you can watch. And if he steps out of line, you can get rid of him for any reason whatsoever. But if you don't like him, just say, "Hey, we don't want you. We want to put somebody on our own there," which is obvious, which is okay. That's your right. You're the power. You're the elected. You're the overlords, whatever. Okay? But seriously, just have the testicular fortitude to say, "Hey, we don't want him." Okay? And that's it. Call it a day. But you don't have to go through this. Just change the rules. Make it so that there aren't any conflicts. That's what you're talking about. Remove the possible conflicts, then there aren't any. But then you watch him, and you go, "Is there a conflict?" "No." Fine. "Is there another conflict?" "Maybe." Then you get rid of him. That's all there is. Keep it simple. Not going through this every time for the past...
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Bill Miley.
Hello. As I said last meeting, I support the reappointment of Commissioners Bennett and Trent. The email to your council written by Commissioner John Trent clearly shows credibility of the current board members. I am displeased about the apparent conflict of Chair Quillacy, his city clerk candidacy, and current elected board member of the Ohio Valley Sanitary Board. He has certainly made the planning commission run well. Now, with the new information in this council's current meeting website, reading what was there, I have several new things to say. Apparently, there is ambiguity in the messages written and verbal from our city attorney about legal conflict, no conflict between planning commissioner and elected city clerk. That's interesting. And then there's the Ohio sanitary district attorney, who said, "There's no conflict." It seems the city attorney's interpretation all lead to Chair Quillacy being excluded, and no recommendations to make this appointment possible. Well, that's all new from my point of view. I believe a mountain is being made out of a molehill. Since this is all new to the public, and I assume all new to the council members, and very conflicting and needs verifying, I would hope your council will vote to refer this agenda to the newly elected city council board appointed in December and in ending. I understand Chair Quillacy hopes to be reappointed. He has lots of support in this community. Please support the community.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments online, Bridgette?
Yes, Mayor, we have one comment. Renee? Go ahead, Renee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you very much. What a difficult situation you're in. I agree that Steve Quillacy has, Commissioner Quillacy has done a great job on the planning commission. I think he's been very, worked very hard for our city and represented our city well in many different areas, and I'm glad to see that he is going to be elected as our city clerk. And at this point, I think it would be in the best interest to work with Mr. Quillacy to find a reasonable way out of this. I understand questions to the attorney general are not that difficult to get, and this might be something good to do. I would also like to say that I think our deputy clerk is also a very responsible person who has stepped up to do a lot of work in the last couple of years, and is quite capable of taking responsibilities that the clerk might ask the deputy clerk to do if there was ever any conflict. So I would expect that this could be worked out reasonably among reasonable people with no ill intent on anybody's part. And I hope you can figure out what to do tonight, because it is kind of a difficult situation. Good luck, but I do want to commend the, Mr. Chair Quillacy for his work in representing our city and working hard to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
We do have two more race hands, Mayor. We have Teal and then Stephen Colome. Go ahead, Teal.
Thank you. Thank you very much. To me, listening to this and thinking about it, it comes down to the ethics of the situation. And I think that it's really important to have the trust of the people because semantics and changing things around from the ordinance that you all put together, 953, which also, it also says that two members need to have distinct training in planning, which I don't think that they do. And it doesn't appear, when I watch the meetings, and I also watch all the planning commission meetings, there's a lot of bobbing heads, and there's a couple of people that ask questions. One of the people that asks the most important questions, I think, is Trent, John Trent. So I think that it's a really good crop rotation to have healthy soil, healthy planning. And thank you for your wonderful service to the community, and it's time to fertilize. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal.
Stephen, go ahead.
This issue actually is fairly simple. It's about whether we follow our city's rules, policies, and ordinances consistent with state law, or whether we wing it with each decision. The planning commission is a critical component of city government, second only in importance to the city council. Expertise, training, and experience are required to fully understand building and development plans, including the reading and understanding of site plans, knowledge of scale and potential impacts on project neighbors, grading, and other technical issues. And don't forget that the planning commission also serves as our design review board to evaluate commercial, industrial, and certain residential developments. The best design review decisions are reached when there is design expertise present on the planning commission. In the past, our planning commission had members who were licensed building or landscape architects, electricians, professional engineers, and experienced city planners. The current composition of our planning commission, despite Commissioner Trent's letter, is essentially a lay commission without members who have distinctly separate training and experience in the planning world. It is unfortunate that the city has not yet made a robust effort to identify and recruit individuals who have this distinctly separate training and experience to fill the two required seats that must, by ordinance, have those professional credentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, there's no more race hands.
Okay, we have Star Child.
Thank you. I put my card in a little bit later. I didn't know that I was going to speak. I thought I had put everything that I needed to say in the written comments. But there are a few things I just wanted to say. I've only been here in Ohio a year, and so I didn't see a lot of maybe the political strife that people have talked to before. I actually don't believe the majority of city councils being political in this decision. I think the majority of city councils trying to do the right thing by the city, to follow the law and not get us any legal trouble. One thing that I noticed is Mr. Summers' recommendation, it's new, right? Six years ago, we didn't get it. We didn't get it two years ago. It's new. Unlike any opinion, it's not, it's not the judge's final opinion. There could be some debate. There could be some room for interpretation. When I looked at what the attorney general might do if they got an application to file a writ of quor warranto, I hope I said that right, there's a lot of discretion the attorney general has. They can look and see that in our small town, Steve Quillacy wears three hats, because two of those hats nobody else would do if Steve won it. How can we be held to the same rules as a big town like San Francisco or Contra Costa? We'd have two, how is that in the best interest to have those two seats unfilled, or those two positions unfilled? Also, Steve could recuse himself on day one. He could just write an order to Weston to take over any of the potential conflicts, and that seems like it would moot the issue. And one thing I read is that the attorney general isn't interested in litigating moot issues or allowing a petition for a writ of pro-warranto for moot issues. So for all those reasons, it might be that Mr. Summers' prediction of what the attorney general does, it doesn't come out to be true. So what I want to ask this council to do is to direct Mr. Summers to file a petition for a writ of quor warranto to the attorney general. That would give Steve the opportunity to respond in writing. More than 3 minutes and 20 seconds, he could have counsel. He could write exactly what his position is, and then let's let the attorney general speak for the attorney general self. What Steve said, it was kind of heartbreaking. He's had years and years of service. And if we allow this opinion from Mr. Summers, which I know, you know, he made, he's trying to do the right thing, if we allow that to be the final opinion, the final say, what does that do to tarnish what Steve's worked for so hard? I know Councilmember Lang, Rachel, I think, made the right opinion when you recommended Steve for reappointment. And I think that directing Mr. Summers to file this writ is the right thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Star Child. That's it?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lang, you want to begin?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you all for your sharing, and thank you, Star Child, for acknowledging that. And I really want to debunk this idea that there is some kind of agenda that we want to only appoint planning commissioners who ideologically agree with us. I met with the nominating committee, including Mayor Styx and Vice Chair Trent, and we together collaborated to offer Mr. Quillacy, Chair Quillacy, the reappointment. And he has shown exemplary service. And he is a by-the-book planning commissioner who makes the, keeps the meetings running tightly, and he goes above and beyond to read every little detail and every code, and he has been incredible. And I don't foresee him having any kind of ethical breach. I think he, you know, he holds himself to a really high standard, and you can see that every time you go to the planning meetings. When I was talking with the members of the nominating committee, we decided that we wanted to, that we, that there were, that there were things that we wanted to follow up on, including looking at the code, looking at, you know, what the ethical violations could be. And so we have together recommended that we put a, that we, that we put a pause on the reappointment, and that we interview the other candidates, and that we make a decision when we have more information. So that is what we came to, as we have a new code now that says we have to come to a unanimous decision. And we've worked really hard. We've put a lot of effort into coming up with this unanimous decision. But it's one that I think is a way forward that keeps us from opening ourselves. I think, you know, yes, going to the AG or, you know, trying to go through that process is one thing. But I don't think we would be a wise body if we did anything that said, "Let's go ahead and violate a law. Let's go ahead and break a law and invite in legal issues." So before we move forward with doing that, we need to figure out what we can do that would allow us to make this decision without imposing, without inviting in legal issues. And with that process, we also did keep open the possibility that he would be the best, that he would be the best candidate. But we need more time to make that decision. And Bill Miley's suggestion of waiting till the next council, I think, was good. But I think that we can do this sooner than that.
Would you like to go ahead and put a motion on the table?
Yes. I would like to move to reappoint Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Trent and to pause on the reappointment of Chair Quillacy.
Okay, I'll second that motion. But we'll continue a discussion. Okay, friendly amendment?
I would really like to separate the two. I would like to ratify the nomination of Jamie Bennett and Commissioner John Trent, just as you stated. But then look at number, our options for two separately.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's go ahead and have a roll call for that motion. Are we ready for that, Mayor Protem? For that motion?
As far as just organizing the...
The motion would be to reappoint Commissioners Trent and Bennett.
Well, I have comments about that.
Well, we have a motion, that motion's on the table, and it's been second. Would you like to comment?
Yeah. So Ohio has a problem with enforcing rules or even acknowledging that the rules exist. And as much as I think that Mr. Bennett is a fine commissioner and has added value, he does not meet the criteria for our planning commission and what we've set out as the criteria. We're required to have at least two members chosen from persons having distinctly separate training and experience from fields of architect, art, building, construction, civil engineering, land use planning, land use law, urban planning, or landscape design. And Mr. Bennett does not fit those criteria. In addition, our ordinance says that a maximum... In addition, our ordinance says that a maximum, it says that it's preferred that all members of the commission have primary residence and be domiciled within the city, and a maximum of two members of the commission may have primary residence and be domiciled outside the cities if determined necessary by the city council to appoint commissioners with specialized expertise. So there, there is no wild card in the Planning Commission where you get to appoint people outside of city residents unless they meet a special criteria that's lacking on our ability to get that from the, from the city itself. And so I do not believe that Mr. Bennett meets those criteria, and therefore I wouldn't support reappointing him. I would support reappointing Mr. Trent. So I guess I'll make a third motion that we split it up even further, vote separately on Trent versus Bennett and...
Okay, so you made a motion to appoint Commissioner Trent. All right, I will second that motion. Are we ready for a roll call on that one?
No, I would like to make some comments. The ordinance says specialized training. That is ambiguous. It does not say a professional. It does not say a licensed. It does not give any criteria for what specialized training is. As John Trent said, Jamie Bennett, and, and I feel bad even having to defend this, but Jamie Bennett has art and architecture experience. Has anyone looked at his resume? Do you know that that's not true? I'm thinking probably not. So, so that's the first question, you know? The second question is, is that we have gone all over this before. This is, the same question has come back up, right? Who, how many, how many commissioners need to live in, live in the city? What does all of this mean? Is this going to come up every single time that we have a commissioner appointment? Jamie Bennett, and so let's, let's just start with the term specialized training. Doesn't say licensed, doesn't say professional, doesn't in any way give any criteria for what specialized training is, and as I contended at the last meeting, spending four years or eight years on the Planning Commission must count as specialized training. You have seen it all. You have given deep thought in ways that just training doesn't give you, and you've had to be specific to Ojai. All of that, to me, easily equals specialized training. I think that we need to revisit this. For instance, do we really need a planner? We have a whole planning department. How does that work? We need a planner? Really? I don't think so. I think we've got plenty of planners. So maybe we need to look at this whole ordinance again and say, you know, what's really going on here? We know, and with all due deference to Councilmember Lang, we know that Councilmember Whitman was a strong supporter of Kathy Lottis, who was a planner, a retired planner, by the way, with no housing law experience whatsoever or keeping up with housing law, as admitted in the interview by her. We know all of that, and the community knows what this is about. So, so I can say that it is terrible form, it is disrespectful to all of the commissioners, and it's wrong. They have specialized training, and before you say that any of these don't, perhaps you need to have a conversation with them. Jamie Bennett has deep history in art. He has deep history in architecture. Do you know that to not be a fact? Have you spoken to him? I don't think so. So what I'm saying is, it looks bad, it is bad, and we talked about, over and over, about whether or not you needed to live in the city proper, and we came up with the decision that we came up to, and now we're calling this in question yet again. So if you want to separate the two, that's fine, but not to reappoint Jamie Bennett is...
Unethical.
It is unethical. It is, it is just bad form.
Excuse me, let's, I think, let's stop the name-calling, and we do...
Well, I didn't, nobody can't, nobody called names, by the way.
I think that we have...
We called about behavior.
Excuse me.
No, you're interrupting me. We called on behavior. Behavior as in unethical. We did not say anyone was unethical. We said behavior was unethical.
I'm going to recommend that we have three motions. We have one motion on the table, so let's deal with that one first, and then we can go through the second one. So would you repeat the motion, please?
I believe the city attorney's going to repeat the motion.
I'm happy to repeat the motion. I also want to make sure Mayor Pro Tem Whitman doesn't lose his phone.
I hope that you stay.
I want to respond.
Okay.
Okay?
Mayor Pro Tem?
I have not engaged in any unethical behavior.
I was not saying that.
You did not say that. The angry council member at the end said that, that I engaged in unethical behavior. First of all, I had nothing to do and was completely surprised when we received a memo from our city attorney saying that there was a problem with Mr. Quilice having incompatible There, you know, it's unethical to tell people that we've deviated from the process we agreed to when the process has always included, included a majority of the city council as being the final decider of who we select for positions. And so the, Mr. Gilvin is completely wrong about that, and it's a very political position to take in a situation where you say we shouldn't be political. Is it unethical to have removed a, 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 a planning commissioner who had served for four years, who had a master's in planning, and she was not reinstituted for her second You know, for what reason, other than politics?
Who, who was that? I'm sorry, who, who was that? I was not here for that.
Excuse me, can you run it through the chair, please?
Excuse me, Mayor.
I wasn't here for this.
Yes. Kathy Lottis was a, was a planning commissioner who served four terms and applied for a second term, and she was not given a second term so that people on the council at the time could make their political appointments. So what's happening, you know, I can call it a political appointment if you can call what we're doing here a political act when we're actually just taking advice from an attorney. But there, the, for some reason, somebody's decided that Kathy Lottis, who has a master's in planning and served as a planner for years in Laguna Beach, is not, that she shouldn't be appointed for mysterious reasons that have never been expressed. We, you know, we have a big problem because, you know, we have rules and, you know, everything's a fight, and I think Mr. Starkweather is 100% responsible for that, organizing the fight. He is, you know, he came to us from North Carolina where he said he has one playbook, and that's to create division.
Excuse me.
Wait a second.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Council here. Point of order. Point, point of order. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, one at a time, please. One at a time. Can you finish, Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll continue?
Yeah. I, no, I'm, I am thoroughly disgusted by how easy it is for people to accuse others of being biased and being prejudiced, and, and yet they can't look in the mirror and see what they're doing. So, yeah, I think this is a, this has been a really horrible chapter in the city's experience, but I will remind people who, you know, who think there's no reason to have provisions related to having two people on the council, on the Planning Commission, that that rule has been in place for about 50 years, as far as I know, that we have had people with specialized backgrounds because it assists the process to have people making decisions who actually have experience in the field they're making decisions about. And I do not agree at all that any of the current planning commissioners have any of those criteria.
Okay. Councilmember Francina, and just a reminder, Council, we have a motion and a second on the table about reappointing Commissioner Trent.
I just want to say for the record, I was not part of the majority, I, I was in favor of keeping Kathy Lottis on the Planning Commission, so don't look at me.
Okay.
Yeah, I was not, I, I, I recognize her qualities. You know, what makes this whole thing even more interesting is that Stephen Colome is the husband of Kathy Lottis, and he's gone out of his way to point out the defect, the deficiencies in our current planning commission. And John Trent, who I was, on my appointment, points out the background of all the commissioners, and in his opinion, I'm just going to read the concluding paragraph of the two pages that he wrote why the current body is qualified and why he, John Trent, feels they should all be reappointed. So he states, "Based on the experience and background of our current commission, Mr. Colome is incorrect. We currently have planning commission members who have, quote, 'relevant professional experience,' is my thing on?
Yes.
Okay. Outlined in the ordinance. With the appointment of Robert Graham, we have four commissioners who have a primary residence in the city of Ojai and two with relevant professional experience and training in the arts, architecture, land use planning, and land use law." And I'll, I'll pause there. This public comment is on the city website for anyone who wants to read it in its entirety. And I also want to remind this council that it's been a year that we've been grappling to fill a vacancy. This coming month, the Planning Commission is going to have to grapple with the homeless encampment, the, you know, that we need as many people on that, on the Planning Commission as possible. For that reason, I, I feel that we should at least get to the point where we, I'm hoping we can get to the point where we do, you know, my motion that I made to re, to ratify Jamie Bennett and Commissioner John Trent.
Okay, how about, Council, let's go ahead and vote on the motion on the table, and then we can continue. We have this... Okay, I'm going to call the question, Council. Yes?
I was going to restate the motion.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
So the motion on the table is by Mayor Pro Tem Whitman, the second from Mayor Styx, to appoint Commissioner Trent.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Styx. I need a question. So then?
Then we'll go to the next.
Then we'll take all the other motions thereafter. So there's three, three nominations on the table tonight. Nomination for Commissioner Trent, for Commissioner Bennett, and for Chair Quilice. The motion is to just deal with Trent, and then other, there's other motions still on the table.
So voting separately doesn't negate anything?
Correct. Voting separately doesn't negate the others, and as noted, there was, seems to be support for...
Mayor Styx.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we will go ahead and move back to discussion, to the reappointment of Commissioner Bennett. Councilmember Rule, you wanted to make a comment?
I do.
And, and if anybody would like to put a motion on the table, that'd be great.
I thought the motion was already on.
So you have the prior motion still on the table, which was by Councilmember Lang, with the second by Mayor Styx, to appoint Commissioner Bennett, and then pause Commissioner Quilice's appointment.
Okay, all right, so that stands.
That motion's still on the table, subject to other motions.
So we, we have the motion on the table to appoint Commissioner Bennett. Is that, is that the next, the next motion up?
The present? Yes.
Yes.
And, and to, at the same time, separate the question of Chair Quilice? Is that also inherent in the motion, or, okay?
I had understood the motion was both, regarding both Bennett and Quilice. The motion is to appoint Bennett and pause Quilice. A different motion could be made to just appoint Bennett, or if that's...
Or, or we could, or we could make a motion to appoint Bennett and to, to postpone the final decision about the reappointment, but allow him to stay in office until we make that decision.
But that's a separate motion.
And that happens automatically.
Okay, okay, great, great.
Do you want to, do you want to change your...
Am I hearing that we want, that, that, we want that to be two separate motions?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, then the motion would be to reappoint Commissioner Bennett.
Right, and so just two things to say once again. If you're looking at the ordinance, it says specialized training. Specialized training is not defined. If we want to say that we're not adhering to the ordinance, then we need to be a little bit more specific because it is within the realm of possibility, and in my case, it is with the, in the, if, that four years sitting on the, on a planning commission get specialized training outside, and we don't know. So that's the first thing, to say that we're not following our own ordinance is for someone on, someone basically defining what specialized training is. It's not, it's not, it's specialized training. It's nothing else. So don't make it anything else. And I will remind my also angry council member on the other end that you said, "I want my own guy on the Planning Commission," and I quote, "I want my own guy on the Planning Commission." That was the first thing you led with when this whole debacle started. So that is why people have that, that is why that is in people's heads, because you said it.
Yeah, but...
Yeah. Let's, excuse me, no, no, excuse me, Council, let's just take turns. Did you, are you finished, Councilmember Rule?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah. I said that we should all be, each council member should, you know, select a commissioner, and that was voted down. So that is not the rule here. It's not anything that I expect I can do because we didn't vote to do it that way. We now have a convoluted process for selecting councilmen because that, because, planning commissioners, because that was, you know, my proposal was refused. And the language is distinctly separate training. We should use the right language, and I don't have any evidence in front of me that any of the planning commissioners have, or that Jamie Bennett has distinctly separate training in any of those fields.
Okay, let's take, no, excuse me, and we're going to take turns, so I would like to just comment that I also supported each council member appointing a commissioner, and that did, was voted down on that, just to avoid these issues. It was a much simpler system, and I think potentially in the future, councils could look at that, see if there, there's an agreement. I want to thank Commissioner Bennett for his service, and I really appreciate all those years on the Planning Commission. I do think it is important that we follow our own rules, and I think I read this in the last meeting.
the last meeting, distinctly separate training is the phrase that jumps out in the ordinance, and I do think we need to follow that. And the fact that Commissioner Bennett doesn't live in the city limits, I think is also an issue. I don't think, though, we as a council, as five people, need to sit and argue, this is a clear vote, we'll just make a decision. So we have, we have a motion, and we have a second, to reappoint Commissioner Bennett, so I would like to call the question, and, you know, it's just a yes or no, right? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sticks.
No.
Sorry, Mayor Sticks.
That's okay.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the discussion of Chair Quilisi about reappointing. Would, who would like to begin the conversation?
I'm sorry, can I?
Yep.
Did we not have a second motion from Francina?
Oh, I can make the motion.
Oh, okay.
I can make the motion to, to pause the, to not move forward with reappointing, and for the nominating committee to meet and interview potential candidates, and also to, to make, propose another nomination.
Okay, and I will, I will second that.
I want to ask some questions.
Sure.
So what this means is that Commissioner Steve Quilisi will continue to serve on the planning commission. Is that correct?
Yes, and until a reappointment, an appointment is made to that seat, the present Commissioner Quilisi, or Chair Quilisi continues in his role as a planning commissioner under the current ordinance.
Okay. Would this council consider a friendly amendment? We had discussed waiting 60 days, and we're, in about 75 days, we're going to have a new council. Would Councilwoman Rachel Lang consider, we can grapple with this, but that we have the next council, look at all of this? I don't know quite how to say it at the moment, because by the time you come back, I mean, we have to go, this means that we have to go through advertising again, right? Is that what, we're going to...
Yeah, I understand the motion would be to re-advertise the vacancy, take any nominations, have the nominating committee meet, and not, per the ordinance, meet with whoever may apply, re-interview, and then return with a new nomination.
Okay.
Correct.
How long do you foresee that, you usually do that for a month?
The whole process, probably 30 to 60 days, depending on timing.
Okay, 30 to 60 days.
I think we should go forward now, personally.
Okay.
So perhaps, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any final comments before the roll call?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this should be a friendly amendment or not. I think we need forward with a quo warrant, requite, to the AG, because I see that, I see, we're going to be interviewing people, but there's always going to be that question in the back of the mind, well, you know, is this legal, is this not legal? And honestly, I don't, I don't think that, with all due respect to our city attorney, that we can say that that is illegal, a value, it's a legal interpretation, but that's what it is. And I would like the specifics of what we have to be part of this discussion. I also think that our ordinance is incorrect in how duties are allocated, and I think we should fix that. So, you know, I think the nominating committee will go in saying, well, you know, you will not have clarity on the issue of whether or not there is a conflict. Therefore, you know, I'm not comfortable with that level of ambiguity for the decision-making. And then it's going to come to us, and we're going to have the same conversation again. So I'm feeling like, just given the nature of the current council, that we're going to need a professional attorney general opinion, and I would like to move that forward, because we are in no position to make this evaluation. We're in no position to evaluate the interpretation of the city attorney, just simply because we don't know enough. It's a deep, deep issue. I mean, the question of quo warranto is incredibly complex, and we are not able to deal with it. So I think that that's our only way for clarity. That's our only way for clarity, and it's the only way that it actually gives Commissioner Quilisi a chance to respond. So I don't know if that's a friendly amendment, or if that's a motion, but I think that that's what we need to do, before we do anything, really. We need to clean up the ordinance, and we need to send this to the AG with a quo warrant, so that they can, he, she, whomever, can make an evaluation. And to me, that's the only way forward. So I don't know if that's a friendly amendment, I don't know if that's a motion. If it's a motion, it's a motion. So I make that motion.
The answer to the question, is it a friendly amendment, or is it a motion, is if the maker of the motion accepts it, it's a friendly amendment. If they do not, as just happened, then it's a motion to, it'd be a substitute motion to refer all of the above to the attorney general via asking for a quo warranto.
I'm going to make that motion. Okay, is there, is there, just one second.
She didn't get a chance to respond. Let Rachel respond.
Yeah, no, I responded, I don't, I, that is not, I don't want that to be a part of my initial motion.
Okay, so is there, just one second, Mayor Protem, is there a second for that motion on the table?
The new motion?
Councilmember Rule's motion.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, all right, Mayor Protem.
I just want to make clear that a quo warranto is asking the court to issue a writ removing somebody from their office. So are you, are the two of you actually wanting to pursue a order from a court removing Mr. Quilisi from an office?
I don't see that as...
If you want that, then I don't think you should be making this motion.
Councilmember Rule, do you want to respond?
That's not what I understand it to be. I understand it to be the permission to do so is the, the evaluation to do so is the first, and then the permission to do so is the second.
So it's a request to the attorney general asserting that there is a conflict, or maybe a conflict. You can ask it and phrase it in the conditional, there may be a conflict, ask the attorney general to grant permission to sue, and then he either grants it or not, he or she is applicable, grants it or not. There is a second choice in which the council can choose not to file the lawsuit, as obviously may or may not be the choice. So it's, it is a request for a writ to remove from office, but the council can choose not to file the lawsuit, which would be the process to get the writ. It's a vehicle to get the opinion from the attorney general, if that's the council's direction.
It's not an automatic filing of a removal. It's basically...
It's a request to remove, it's a request to remove for the attorney general to evaluate the request to remove, and then the lawsuit doesn't get filed until the, until two things happen. One, the attorney general grants permission, and two, the council authorizes filing the lawsuit.
Right, so it's not automatic. They would come back to the council, who would then have to, so essentially, what I am proposing is that we get the highest interpreter of law in the state to interpret for us. Then it comes back to us to decide whether or not we move forward, or anyone else decides to move forward, although I'm not sure that if we apply, that anyone can then...
Yeah, no, the person who apply, if this council applied, permission were granted to sue, and the council chose not to sue, someone else would have to reapply for permission, although one would expect the AG wouldn't change their mind in a few minutes.
Okay, so it's limited to the person who applies for this to be able to sue. Someone else, once they knew the finding, they could choose, so they could choose to do that if they so chose. So I don't see any other way forward than to have the highest legal interpreter, because he's not a judge, he's an interpreter, he interprets the law, give an interpretation. I don't, I don't see any other way forward.
Okay, let's...
So I'm going to make that motion. I made that motion.
And I'm going to call the question, Councilmember Lang, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, and I think if we take this out of the personal and just look at it from a policy standpoint, if we are going through this confusing, given this conversation, legal process, to, to clarify the conflict of interest, I just think this is just setting a precedent for any future council member who has a political agenda to be able to, like, to be, it gives them a path forward to, to work the system. I think that we, that in making this decision, it's, you know, the reason why we decided to hold on this was because the policies are in place, the conflict of interest, the ethics of that are in place for a reason. And, and so I just wanted to say that this is not personal. This has nothing to do with ideological views, or who someone is. This really has to do with adhering to a process that we all voted to adhere to, but then also adhering to a policy that's been in place before we were even here.
Thank, and I agree with you, Councilmember Lang, I appreciate that comment. Yeah, we need to follow the rules. So we have a motion on the table, we have a second. Let's go ahead and have the roll call about that.
Question, I'm sorry, quick, clear.
Wait, Councilmember Francina, and then we're going to call the question, yep.
I, what about, my original question about cleaning up this ordinance?
Exactly.
So I thought we'd answer that, so, but happy to go through that again. If the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, is there, is, is what Councilmember Rule is asking, it's related to cleaning up the ordinance? Or can we, we can agendize?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, we can, we can agendize bringing back, because obviously, the existing ordinance has not solved our problem. There's too many questions.
The underlying problem of how the council appoints the planning commission, yes, clearly the process doesn't work, given this level of conflict.
And there's confusion over the use of the word, of the language, the text, city clerk, because it doesn't say deputy city clerk. There's all this stuff that's unclear. So, so as a separate, you know, I'm a little bit worried, because we've been making so many motions.
But that can be agendized for the future.
The council could direct us to come back with more options on rewriting the planning commission ordinance again. We would look for a majority direction to do that, though.
Yeah, Councilmember Lang, yep.
Yeah, but if I, if I could just clarify, that some of the, the conflict of interest concerns aren't specific to the ordinance, they are specific to the roles of each board position, or each elected position, and the planning commission. So even if we go back and change our own ordinance, there are still those larger questions that have to do with county and state policies, correct?
Yes, so as I noted, the larger, there's several pieces of conflict that we've identified. One is the planning commission clerk, or planning commission nomination process, and the clerk's role in that. That's set by the ordinance, that could be deleted at will by the council. So to, clarifying this larger question regarding what does the phrase distinctly separate training and experience, or specialized expertise, mean? That could all be solved by the council, but that does not solve the second piece of my assessment of the council, my opinion to the council, regarding the second, separate potential for clash of duties and loyalties between the clerk and the planning commissioner, which is the inherent elections role the clerk has relative to the council, and relative to the initiatives and referendums, I noted, the basic elections roles.
Yeah, so that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Right, simply amending the planning commission ordinance doesn't fix those conflicts. I recognize the motion by Councilmember Rule to seek the answer from the attorney general, who is, of course, the definitive subject to a court, and we would have no objection to that, but we defer to the council.
Okay.
Unless we basically remove every duty of the clerk, and, you know, actually could eliminate the position.
That takes voter approval to eliminate the clerk position.
Let's go ahead and vote on...
Which we could put on a future ballot, but not tonight.
Let's go ahead and vote on Councilmember Rule's motion, and then we'll get back to Councilmember Lang's.
Could you repeat the motion?
So as I understood the motion, it is to direct the city attorney's office to file a quo warranto request to, regarding the removal of Commissioner Quilisi, framed as a request for attorney general to provide opinion, is he holding an incompatible office or not, to return to the council in public once the opinion is released, but not authorizing filing of any lawsuit.
Okay, that's correct. Roll call, please.
That is my motion, and...
I just want to make one comment, because I've read through it. It's, there's no ambiguity whatsoever in the opinion that the clerk position, no, not the clerk position, the sanitary district position and the planning commission position are incompatible. It does not matter what the individual facts are, the, it's, there's law that says you do not consider how things, you know, go or done, you just look at the duties and roles of the office, and if they are incompatible, they're incompatible, and we have a decision in front of us that they're incompatible.
Okay, roll call, please.
Excuse me, you know, we really need to call the question.
I know, we do, but I have to, I just have to point out that we also have a legal opinion of the sanitary departments.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Well, no, no, we're going to call...
You, you've expressed that, that is not an opinion.
No, no.
That's what Chair Quilisi...
All right, council, we're calling the question. Quiet, please. Bridget?
Councilmember Lang.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
No.
Mayor Sticks.
No. All right, we will return to Councilmember Lang's motion. Could we repeat that motion, just to make sure everybody's on the same page?
Yes.
Please.
Councilmember Lang's motion is to return the nomination for the Quilisi seat to the nominating committee, to return with a new nomination after a new application process.
Okay, all right, we ready for a roll call?
Councilmember Rule.
I'm, I need you to repeat that again, I was engaged in secondary...
Sidebar.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
The motion is to return the Quilisi seat nomination to the nominating committee, to return with a new nomination after completing a new application process and new interviews.
Is it too late to make a friendly amendment? I won't.
Okay, let's have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a short break, and we will, we will be back.
Okay, I'll ask. All right. Thank you.
Within this zone, it's difficult. And the reason why is because it's specifically identified within a, within this specific zone for being for public facilities, for government offices, and for cultural facilities. None of those fit within the framework of what we're talking about here. Are there uses that we have seen that are outside those boundaries? Yes, but they are so specific and so unique, campgrounds for, I would assume for obvious reasons, have been excluded from the PL zone, mainly because they are not necessarily for the public good, but for the outside public good or for tourism purposes.
If we could come back to our seats and we'll move on to item number three, please. Okay, if everybody could come to quiet and we'll move on to discussion item number three. Confirmation of submitting a letter of opposition to the County of Ventura Soul Park Master Plan. Can we come to quiet, please? If you can find your seats, that would be great. Which allows for the development of RV parking and camping in the county-owned Soul Park, which is located within city limits. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is, and our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Carl Alameda, will be delivering the report with possibly some interjection from Mr. Seibert, our Community Development Director, who is online. Mr. Alameda?
Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the councils. So tonight before you is a letter of opposition to the County of Ventura Parks Department Soul Park Master Plan. So Soul Park, as you well know, is fully located within the city limits of Ojai, but is both owned and managed by the County of Ventura and is also the recent home of a highly successful project the city and the county did together to build the new Soul Park tennis courts.
Pickleball courts.
I'm sorry. Pickleball courts. Which I've heard nothing but positive feedback about those courts. So it was a great project to work together with the county for that outcome. The park, well located within Ohio's 203 acres, it also has an 18-hole golf course, a dog park, playgrounds, structures, paddle tennis courts, picnic areas, and again, the recently completed pickleball courts. So the county's Parks Advisory Commission, they've been engaging in a concept review that's been before the Parks Advisory Commission a few times thus far, and it's currently open and available online, and the county's accepting public comments on that plan. The public comment period is open until this Friday, October 18th at 3:00 PM. My understanding is the county's received about 75 comments from the public on the plan itself. I don't have any gauge. If those are supportive or in opposition of, that's just the total number received. So the plan is presented, is going to be done over two phases if it's adopted, and it provides for a couple of things. One is the replanting of trees. So they lost about 90 trees that had died, and they're looking to replant about 213 trees over this project, which the city is fully supportive of that component of the project. The other component is what is of concern that the letter points out, and that's the development of both an RV park and camping grounds in Soul Park. The letter points out that this use isn't compatible with the nature of the park. So the two phases I mentioned, the first would build out half those spaces for 29 RV camping spaces, and then the second phase would provide the balance of those 58 spaces with another 20. So from a use and operational standpoint, the concerns that are held are ones that are environmental, that we have the potential to see increased traffic and disruption in the park with the draw of 58 camping spaces. It also will create noise and air pollution from RVs just by their nature. Usually it's inherent that they have generators, air conditioning units, and other equipment that's not something that's existing in the park at this time. We also worry potentially about overcrowding with this added use of 58 camping spaces. There is the potential increased risk for fire, unfortunately, because camping is something it's an overnight use where this is largely a daytime-use park. So we do worry about that. Alterations to the landscape and the nature of the park itself, typically with RV park camping sites that are standalone, most are standalone, they aren't combined with recreational uses. But you see things added in terms of amenities such as the need to build out roads, concrete pads, extend utilities to the campsite, and other amenities like showers, restrooms, and waste dumping stations, which isn't really compatible with an active recreational-use park type Soul Park. So these are some of the operational conflicts that we see and environmental conflicts that we see. Separate from those facts, it also isn't compatible with city zoning, and that's something that Lucas is available to comment more on, our Community Development Director. And he's available on Zoom. If he has anything to add, and I can answer questions on the operational parts, and Lucas can give you an update on the zoning. He looks quite comfortable.
I am comfortable. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Through the mayor, if I could. Yeah, the zoning itself is PL, which is public quasi-public zoning. Sorry. I'm relaxed. I'm enjoying myself listening to the council meeting tonight. From a use standpoint, the use itself is not actually allowed. As a camping campground use, it's not allowed use within the PL. Camping is allowed within other zones.
Lucas, you may not realize your camera's on, by the way.
Okay. Let me do this.
No! Why'd you tell him? Come on! We have to protect our people. You didn't have a chance to put on those shirts. It was great.
So I think it's important to understand that from a use standpoint within the PL zone, campgrounds are not allowed use. They are allowed in open space, but they're not allowed use within the PL zone in which we're talking about specifically. So, and in the PL, just as a general understanding for PL, it is a district applied to areas appropriate for public facilities, government offices, and cultural facilities. The maximum building intensity varies and shall be determined through the development review process on a case-by-case basis. The PL zone district is consistent with the public quasi-public land use designation of the general plan. So there's consistency with the general plan and the zoning, so we're good there. It's just a matter of this campground. The campground itself is not allowed use. Period.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rule.
I do have a question. If it were you, and you really wanted to do this, could you contort, twist, change, or in any way argue that it is an allowed use? Could you stretch your brain to figure out and make an argument that it was an allowed use?
Within this zone, it's difficult. And the reason why is because it's specifically identified within a, within this specific zone for being for public facilities, for government offices, and for cultural facilities. None of those fit within the framework of what we're talking about here. Are there uses that we have seen that are outside those boundaries? Yes. But they are so specific and so unique, campgrounds for, I would assume for obvious reasons, have been excluded from the PL zone. Mainly, mainly because they are not necessarily for the public good, but for the outside public good, or for tourism purposes. Period.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. First, we have William Wyrick and then Bill Miley.
Well, now that I'm retired, you know, elected official, it's nice to move beyond polite statements. No, they didn't just replace the trees, the county killed the trees. That's scientifically a fact. All right? So let's not mince words here. The county has not been a good steward of this property. They killed the trees. All right, now they're replacing them. I think the last statement was very interesting. There is a LAFCO guidelines that are very specific that have not been mentioned, that the county is supposed to be consistent with city planning guidelines, especially in the sphere of influence, and I don't see this mentioned, and I think that would be a good thing to include in this letter. The other thing is I support Bill Miley's comments regarding expanding beyond with the comments I just made about strengthening this letter by referring to the LAFCO guidelines. And third, I would like to see, maybe not just saying we're opposed to this, which I absolutely urge you to do as strongly as possible, but also, you know, the carrot and the stick. This is a vacuum. The county always wants money. They want the parks to show a positive income. That was one of the things that we were trying to do with the memorandum of understanding that you guys, you know, chose to move away from, was to expand our park recreation services by including an income positive for the county. So they're looking at another way to do positive income. I would submit to you that expanding parks and recreation services is a much better way of piggybacking some increase in revenue than leaving this vacuum that they're then thinking about, oh, let's fill it with an RV park. So I would suggest that maybe you look at things like expansion of the bike path that I remember Councilman Francina and I used to talk about. There's a very good guideline for expanding the bike path through here, expanding park and recreation services. We have no women's softball leagues. Why not? We could. So I just think that we don't look at just the, you know, not just no, but hell no. In turn, I can talk like this now, but also here's a positive alternative that meets, you know, some of their monetary self-interest. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Bill Miley.
Hello. First, a little protocol comment. I assume the protocol for correspondence with other agencies is by the principal leader of the council. That's why the mayor authors the letter. However, it would seem to me more logical if the mayor submitted this draft, as you're doing, with a request to review, as you're doing, and then noting within the letter this approval process, and also indicate that it was supported by the council members. Okay. I suggest two additions. One, make a statement about the expelling of greenhouse gases from the RVs and the supportive vehicles which accompany them. Frequently, as hate us in the RV parks, there's a second vehicle that comes along. Two, not one. I gave you a chart that shows by Cruise America on the gas mileage these vehicles get. A big one gets six to 10 miles per gallon. Okay, greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas. Class B, 18 and 22, greenhouse gas. And then Class C, 10 to 15 miles per gallon. You could probably smell it as they go along Ojai Avenue. And those that don't have a second vehicle will come into Ojai with their RVs and take-up spaces. So please consider the gas mileage issue. Now, a better suggestion. More folks recently are speaking out for the county leadership in a community pool. It's very much needed. There is a need for our council to collaborate with this county government in doing this. Most recently, Councilmember Rule spoke about this valued recreation need. Maybe we should form a valley-wide recreation district. So please add these two suggestions, and there's a horse area out there, folks, that was missed in the inventory. And I'll bet those horse people are not going to be very happy when the dust is created and the RV people say, "Stop that! Stop that! It's wrecking our RV experience." Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments online, Bridgette, for this item?
No, Mayor, there is no comments online.
Okay. We will return to discussion. Who would like to begin? And just a little history. I have been contacted by many community members about this item, so I went to staff and asked what could we do, and so this is where we are. Anybody?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
So a few things that I, I guess we're looking at adopting this letter that's attached to our staff report, and the, I think I would add to this, and there's been a number of people that have commented to me about this going back a couple of years to when the trees were actually killed, is that they are very upset that the replacement of the trees is not going to have an impact on their lifetimes if the county plans to put little, you know, twigs that'll eventually grow into mature trees. And that because they are responsible, we should be asking them to replace the trees with mature trees. I know that's exorbitantly expensive, but I think it's something that we can at least ask for and see if we can get some mature trees. I agree with Mr. Wyrick that in terms of the language, first of all, I would support the idea that we do this as opposed to the mayor's letter, but with her permission, if we're all in agreement, do we say we are writing to express opposition as opposed to concern?
Yeah.
And, let's see. And then, so that would be at the beginning, and then down when, just before the bullet points, I would say the city of Ojai objects to potential addition of 58 camping sites. But I would, I would start this out with one of our list of objections. I would make objection number one, that the project doesn't provide a public benefit to the residents of the city and the greater valley. And then, and, and thank you, Lucas, for articulating that. And then I would also say that the, where did I write this down somewhere? So the addition of RV traffic would result in an increased burden on an already overcrowded traffic, on already overcrowded traffic conditions in the city of Ojai. And I would add the comments, something along the lines, I haven't worked this out, but the, I agree with Mr. Miley that the detrimental impact on air quality in the valley, not just from having the RVs, you know, running through town, but also, I've done some camping, and yes, I don't use a generator, but I get to listen to them when I go camping. So I would, I would add that.
Mayor Protem, would you like to make a motion with those additions to the letter? That Matt, our city attorney wrote down. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd move that we make those additions, and that we sign, or as, I don't want to assume that all five of us will sign, but I think that would be the best result, but that, you know, however many sign, so that they get the message that this is not, you know, just a mayor lark, it's a big-city response.
And I will second that motion.
If I could clarify one item, on the sizing of the trees, they're replacing a far greater number than what was killed. I believe it was around 90 that were lost, and they're putting in 213. Do we want to ask for a larger?
Hold on, just one at a time. Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Francina?
Yeah, so, you know, with my motion, why don't we say something along the lines of, and I'll take editing from anybody, but that we, that because there are, you know, so many residents who are going to miss out on having mature trees in the park, we would like the county to consider to replace as many of the trees with mature or semi-mature trees as is feasible.
Okay. Councilmember Francina and then Councilmember Lang?
And if I could jump in ahead very briefly, staff would also suggest in the motion including the reference to the Guidelines for Order of Development. Former Councilman Wyrick is absolutely right. That should be part of this. For those not familiar with it, some time ago in the 80s, every city in the county and the county all agreed together to these partnerships for some guidelines regarding development to be orderly and consistent with each other's policies where applicable. So that should be added as well, if the council so chooses.
Okay.
I would add that to my motion as well.
That's what I was going to say, and put it as close to the front as possible, because that's powerful.
Councilmember Lang? Yep.
Well, I just want to say, my 57-year-old son, I have pictures when those trees were little. Those were really old trees. We will not be here when they mature. I mean, maybe some of us, by severe.
Okay. Councilmember Lang?
Do we know if those trees are going to be native trees? Fire, like fire, fire-safe trees?
My understanding was that they were looking to replant oaks.
Okay. Good. Thank you. So I'm in agreement with all the other things, including having us as a council sign it.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm also in agreement that we all sign it. I appreciate Council, Mayor Protem Whitman's encouragement that we be a little bit stronger in our opposition. Our constituents have certainly shown that. They, I go to Soul twice a day, and number one, it's very difficult to find shade, because there's only about five places now that have shade. Well, that's kind of an exaggeration. There are places, you know, but they're, it's hard to find shade, let's just put it that way. So, and this can't be part of this letter, but I just do want to mention that we still don't know really what happened with those trees. There's been no accountability as to what happened, and it may be that the county doesn't know, it may be that the county doesn't want to share, it may be that it's still in process. But I think that the citizens of Ojai need an explanation as to how this happened. It was, it was a great, great loss for the city. And finally, I just wanted to point out that the traffic coming off of 150 into Boardman, you know, you take your life in your hands now, because people speed up around that curve, and you have to boot out, you know, you have to worm your way out to look left, look right, and they're speeding up. But someone pointed out in the letter to the editor that Boardman is covered with low-hanging branches of very old trees, and these class, you know, the very long and high RVs will damage those. That, you look up there, you know that that's the case. And once again, that's not something that I think as a council we should be willing to, that's to me a very big deal. So I support it 100%. I support making it as strong as we can without being alienating, but our constituents and the citizens of Ojai and the Ojai Valley are very clear that this is not what they want.
Thank you, council. And I would also like to thank Mayor Protem for those additions. Very helpful. Yeah, councilmember?
Yeah, I just want to quickly thank all the wonderful community members who wrote excellent letters. They submitted them. Some of them came to us, some of them I foresee will be hopefully published in the Ojai Valley News. And I especially want to thank Patricia Hartman, who I think wrote the first couple of editorials. They were excellent. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number four. Introduce an ordinance adding a new article to the Ojai Municipal Code prohibiting the unethical breeding of companion animals. We have a staff report.
Brief staff report, and I'm also joined by Assistant City Attorney Taylor Anderson, who worked closely with folks on this one. So it is ordinance that would prohibit breeding dogs or cats with congenital and anatomical features likely to cause suffering. Those include short snouts, abnormal breathing sounds, risky body shapes, difficulty in naturally mating, and various other malformations as mentioned in the ordinance, including unnatural postures and disorders. Enforcement would be by police officers and designated city officials. The violation is treated as infractions, subject also to administrative enforcement and injunctive relief as needed. With that, we are available for any questions, and I also understand representative from the organization that suggested this to the city is available as well.
Any questions from council? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and take public comment. First, we have William Wyrick, then Cynthia Wyrick, then Leah Hecker.
I'm going to be pretty short. My wife Cynthia is here. Has a lot of education she's given me on this issue. You know, I think there's always a fundamental choice for government. Do you want to inform choice, or do you want to tell people that they can take your choices away from you? It's a pretty sweeping companion breeds, some of which on that list have, even by DNA analysis, been shown to be in existence for more than two millennia. Yes, indeed, there are bad practices in terms of breeding, but this is a sweeping eliminate-the-breed mentality. Companion animals are actually important to a lot of people. And the logic of this, you know, we're government, we're going to tell you what to do mentality, is also very sweeping in terms of here at this moment in time, in a small city of 4.2 square miles, saying, well, we know better than a cultural history going back millennia. I know the dogs that we have, one of the things I like about them is that they're on this list, but they are, have characteristics that are what they call throwback characteristics. And a lot of the breeding that was done in the, beginning in the 17th and 18th century has put a lot of bad characteristics into many breeds, not just companion breeds. Far better, I think, to find a way to more affirmatively have responsible breeding practices rather than to castigate and say this entire class of breeding, of breed is bad. There's almost a sort of anti-domestication mentality here. And, you know, we, our human culture is very intertwined with domesticization of animals and, of course, plants, in terms of selection for certain characteristics, and it can be done well, it can be done poorly. But this is a, basically an ideological, these are bad to have, these are bad breeds to have, they shouldn't exist. And that's, that's pretty extreme. And I want to comment, I'll just make really quick about how, well, you know, the experts show up and they know what to do. I saw this today. An organization in the Appalachians saying, well, we've seen FEMA once. They brought in a pallet of electric chainsaws to communities with no power. Yeah? They cut down greenhouse commissions, but absolutely useless for people back in the area where no power, where they're trying to... area where no power, where they're trying to clear the roads.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Cynthia Wyrick, then Leah Hecker, and then Bill Miley.
Well, I'm not, I'm displeased, very displeased. This seems to be something between whoever wrote this ridiculous list up and the American Kennel Club, or the English Kennel Club, or the Canadian Kennel Club. And anyway, trying to get, trying to explain to you all that, that dichotomy between mutts and purebred dogs, we've lived with it forever. I mean, we've just lived with it forever. And yes, people who have money are usually the ones that have a purebred dog. Okay? So what? You know, so what? I've had, I've had rescues before, didn't enjoy them as much as my pugs. Can tell you that. I've never enjoyed anything as much as my pugs. Anyway, I'm just going to read. I'm going to read fast, because it's a lot. The American Kennel Club, Club's mission statement says that it will maintain a registry for purebred dogs to preserve integrity and ethical behavior. Members act as goodwill ambassadors for the pug breed by attempting to educate the public, interested parties, and new owners whenever possible. I am a member of several pug groups. I answer questions online every day. People that have gotten a pug and didn't really know what they were getting, and they're like, was that, you know, what they should be doing? Let's see. The whole breed has changed. There have been pug-like dogs known in China for, since 400 BCE. That's a long time. And it seems like if they were such a bad breed, they just would have died out, or they would have changed. They would have morphed into something else. But anyway, and a lot of things did happen in the 17th and 18th century. They tried to change the pugs that were brought in by the Dutch. So that's that. Let me buy my place. The pug was a companion dog, as it is a stable, even-tempered dog at its, even-tempered breed, known for its playfulness, charm, dignity, loyalty, and outgoing, outgoing, loving disposition. They aren't diggers. They don't fetch dead birds, you know, in the woods, or in the water. A pug, from the Old English, means someone tenderly loved. I have needed that in my life. I mean, I had a broken back, I was in bed for years. My pug was beside me. I would have lost my mind. I mean, that is my emotional support dog. They were not bred to do work. They know two things: to eat and to be by your side. They do not kill.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next, we have Leah Hecker, then Bill Miley, then Jacob Shaw.
So, hi. I commend you on wanting to do something for animals. However, seeing that Ojai is not the breeder capital of California, I find this law, or ordinance, to be kind of performative. So I wanted to come and give you an idea of something where you could do that would really help the animals of the valley. It would help the environment. It would help humans, too, which is nice. So why not do something like this? Why not not follow the example of Porton, Oregon, Los Angeles, San Diego, Oakland, and the entire state of Massachusetts and ban fireworks? Thousands of animals really suffer. I can show you my vet bills that I have every year. But not only the pets suffer, the farm animals, the horses, that are fleeing animals that can't deal with the noise. The wildlife suffers. A 2023 study by Professor Bill Bateman, he says the effects of fireworks were multifarious and profound. We were pretty much blown away by the extent of them. Fireworks are not a minor problem.
Yeah.
Fireworks are devastating for the environment. When fireworks explode, they rain down plastic, gunpowder, metals like lead, copper, cadmium, titanium, and aluminum, and toxic chemicals. These impact air quality, human health, waterways, and soil. And they start fires. In 2022, 31,302 fires were started by fireworks, and an estimated 109 million in direct property damage, according to Michelle Steinberg from the National Fire Protection Association. This is why Tahoe City, Tahoe City, California dropped fireworks in favor of drones in 2022, following the Calder Fire, which devastated 22,000, 2200,000 acres. It's good for the environment, it's good for our animals, our animals right here in the valley. It's good for our farm animals and the wildlife, for humans, and for safety measures against fire. So why not follow Tahoe City and ban fireworks and replace them with drone shows, which you could support financially? Catty Biggers of Tahoe says, "Our lake, our surrounding mountains, our wildlife, these are the reasons people live and visit here, so sustainability and stewardship are core values in Tahoe City." Shouldn't they be here, too?
Thank you, Leah. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Jacob Shaw, then Dale Hanson.
Hello. Since we don't know, at least I don't know, whether such breeding is happening in the city, and we don't know if folks are buying such dogs and bringing them home here, therefore, we just don't know. We should agree, then, that this is a principle statement based on a worldwide belief by some to change animal breeding and owning practices. And that this statement, not a resolution, but an ordinance, is a principle statement from our 7,500 residents to speak out and be known, and acknowledge the likelihood there will be no active enforcement. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Jacob Shaw, then Dale Hanson.
Mayor? Jacob would like to hand these out.
Hi, everyone. Is it cool if I just wait until those are handed out before I begin? Because those will be relevant to what I'm saying. Thank you so much. I'm ready whenever you all. So I just wanted to begin by addressing some.
Just one second, Jacob. Will you start it from the beginning? Three minutes, thank you. Okay, perfect. Okay. Go ahead, Jacob.
So I just wanted to begin. First of all, thank you so much for considering this ordinance. And I wanted to start off by addressing some concerns that people have raised and some things that came up in the last meeting about whether this is a problem here. So as of today, just a few miles from where we're gathered, there are currently 10 French Bulldog puppies listed for sale. And all of them have visibly identifiable, extremely narrow nostrils and nasal cavities, and snouts pushed so far back in against their skulls that their side profiles are almost completely flat. Some of these photos are the handouts that I passed out to you. And as everyone can see here, you see the side profile of this dog is almost completely flat. And what that means is that there is not enough room for their internal anatomy to fit. Their soft palate extends backwards, it covers part of their windpipe, and that's why you hear the signature snorting, wheezing sounds from a lot of these flat-faced brachycephalic dogs. So for the rest of their lives, these puppies, who are just a few months old right now, will be trapped in deformed bodies, unable to breathe properly, unable to thermoregulate, unable to run and jump and chase a ball, and do all of the things that make a dog's life joyful and fulfilling without gasping for air. And this companion animal protection ordinance will help make sure that no more dogs, no more cats, will have to suffer in this way. And as Dr. Milne spoke about in the last council meeting, this type of abusive breeding is just as tangible as physical abuse. The fact that we don't clock it that way when we look at these dogs doesn't mean that they don't experience it like that. So as long as there are people breeding dogs and cats in Ojai, which we know there are, this ordinance makes it illegal for them to breed animals with deformities that will cause them to suffer. So this is just common sense. A number of speakers mentioned how some of these breeds have long histories, and I would point anyone who's curious to look at older photos of these breeds where they had more normal anatomies. They had longer snouts, and it was only through the pursuit of an extreme look that some people find cute that they've become so unhealthy. And that's to say, we don't know which breeds or which extreme looks will become popular in the next five, 10, or 20 years. But this ordinance protects all dogs and cats in Ojai from being bred to become the next bulldog, from being bred into a genetic cul-de-sac where they will spend their lives struggling and suffering. So anyone who's spent time with a dog or cat knows that it's not how they look that matters, it's who they are. So anyone who's really attached to a specific breed, I would just ask, if your dog had a longer snout, if they had a long tail instead of a corkscrew tail, would you love them any less? I think the answer is always no, of course not. I love my dog or my cat for who they are. And for a moment, just think about this from their perspective. That's to say, the dog or cat's perspective. They don't care about breeds.
Can you finish?
Counsel said all right? Yep.
How long? Go for it.
I was just going to say that, you know, the dogs and cats themselves, they don't care about breed standards. They don't care about the way they look. They care about having a healthy and functional body, as all of us do. So I just wanted to thank you so much for taking the step to protect animals. It's really not very often that we have the opportunity to measurably reduce the amount of suffering in the world, but this is one of those opportunities. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jacob. Next, we have Dale Hanson, then Larry Steingold.
Thank you for hearing me. First of all, I want to thank Leah for what she said about the fireworks. I totally agree with that. And it's not only for companion animals, it's for the wild animals. So, but back to the point, these breeds are bred for humans, not for the animal. It doesn't do the animal any good to have some kind of deformity, that they can't breathe right, they can't run right, or they can't do what any animal wants to do, have a normal life. And I think that, you know, while people say, well, we're wasting our time doing things for animals, well, I think it's important that we make a comment. This is the city, this is who we are, this is what we think. As Leslie brought up, the thing about the elephants, that was important to me. I think that as Ojai, we need to say what we think and how we feel. And this issue is something that anyone that has an animal knows, it doesn't matter what the animal looks like. They'll be loving to you no matter what they look like. You know, they can be cute, they can be ugly or whatever, but they still are loving. And those little pug bulldogs, they are cute, especially when they're babies. They are the cutest thing. They call them a chick magnet, because people just go to them. But, you know, we know that what it does to their lives, and I, I hope that you will pass this, and I thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Dale. Next, we have Larry Steingold.
On PETA's website, it says, "Animals are not ours to experiment on, eat, wear, use for entertainment, or abuse in any other way." And we don't have a pet. We did. We had a 15-year-old Bichon. I had a Winnebago. And I had a Dachshund. But now we don't have an animal. And on Friday, November 29th, PETA is free the animals. So between this particular ordinance and the ordinance that you cannot buy a pet, a dog or a cat at a animal store, pet store, anymore, and that you can only use animals from the shelter, which is a good thing. But now we're going to also make sure that they're neutered, which means they can't have. So at the end of the day, are we going to, and we cannot own an elephant, and that's fine. Okay? And that's okay. Can't have one?
That's not correct.
What is it? Can we have one?
If you can provide sanctuary-like conditions for the animal to live like they were born to, so let's be, let's just be accurate.
Okay. I'll take it that, but hold my time. Or not. I don't care. It doesn't matter. The point is, why don't we just go straight to the chase and have no animals owned in Ojai by 2030? No replacement animals, no animal, nobody can own an animal. Free them all. If we're going to give the land and the air and dirt legal status, shouldn't we give animals legal status? Isn't that where it's all going? At least here. If we're going to do it, let's do it. And let's have the conversation. Just put it on the table, resolved. Do we have, nobody gets to own an animal after 2030, and you can't replace an animal that's gone after 2026. Have the conversation, because that's where it's all going. You specify elephant needs sanctuary, great. How about coyotes, wolves, bobcats, donkeys? Whatever they are. I've got a pig across the street. It's great. It's wonderful. They had a, they were taking care of a llama during the Thompson Fire down the street. Great. But nobody gets to own an animal. Take the leash off, freedom. They say here, PETA, Friday, free the animals on Friday. Well, why not free them all the time? They want us to stop using camels in Egypt. Send a resolution there. That's what they're asking. Okay, let's go all the way. Ban the eating of meat. Ban the selling of meat in Ojai. Just put it on the table so we can have the conversation, so we can move on to fixing the roads. I mean, this is not a big deal.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Casey Abbott.
Good evening. My name's Casey Abbott. I'm a former beekeeper, and I'm a breeder of queens and a geneticist. Speaking as a breeder and geneticist, I would like this not to cover all animals, because it's very, very important that we get to be able to breed those bees for the traits that we're looking for. Mostly, I'm looking for traits that improve the lot of the bees. I can see that some of the complaints about are dog breeders who go for cuteness that does not benefit the dog. So if we do word anything in any kind of an ordinance and we do pass it, please, let's be specific about which animals and which types and which intentions and purposes that we're trying to limit within city limits. That's all I really ask, is it reasonable work toward the benefits of the animal be protected, as well as the unreasonable try to be litigated out? Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Any comments online, Bridgette?
No, Mayor, there are no raised hands online.
Okay, we will move to discussion. Would anyone like to begin? And just for clarification, this is an ordinance just about companion animals.
And specifically, dogs and cats. I do want to note, Casey's concern is met. This has nothing to do with bees, dogs, or cats.
Okay. All right, anyone like to begin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. And I think, I appreciate council looking at this and discussing it. And I think it's, and just to reiterate, it's not about eliminating any kind of breeds, it's about eliminating suffering as much as we can. So anything that we can do as a, as a community to reduce suffering, I think that is our moral obligation to do that. So let's go ahead and, yep. And I want to. Go ahead, Rachel.
I just want to add one thing, that this does not prohibit anybody from owning these animals. So if you love your pugs and you want a French Bulldog, you can, there, no, no, no one's going to stop you. But what it does prevent is the, the breeding practices that are abusive. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And I just do want to add, I don't know, Mayor, I did meet a pug who was bred in town, in Daly Park, and I talked to his owner, and so it is happening. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Okay, well, as far as the examples that were brought to us, I did look, you know, at those to the extent I could. And I'm talking about the letter from PETA that listed. So, I mean, two of the sites for breeders could be, you know, verified not to be in the city. The other two, you couldn't tell, one way or the other. I thought that the Wyricks made some comments that were worthwhile, but I don't know about pugs. I've never had one, never spent time with one. My son has a Beagle. And that's not a dog breed that I've ever had any interest in until he had a Beagle. And I can't, I can't imagine my son ever having a dog that wasn't a Beagle at this point, because it is such a fantastic dog. But as I read this ordinance... But as I read this ordinance, it's gonna, it's gonna prevent the, it's gonna force them to try to find a Beagle with long legs. I've never seen one. So how, how is it not prohibiting the, I mean, every Beagle I've seen has those short legs? And I don't know, I actually, I've never seen any suffering that, anything that I would understand to be suffering, you know, for that Beagle. But I, it, I know that this is going to be passed, I'm not going to support it, I don't think that this is what we should be spending our time.
And just, I'm looking at the section where they do talk about beagles, and that selectively bred to have short limbs, so we're just returning to the theme, this is about selective breeding that creates health issues. So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, so let's go ahead and have the roll call unless somebody, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there have been breeders in Ojai. I hear, if you talk to, I talked to a woman who, who worked at the pet store, and the breeder used to send the, the, I think they were pugs, they might have been Frenchies, used to send, on Signal Street, by the way, very close to home, and would send them there. And it's well-known within Ojai that there are breeders who are breeding these breeds, you know, whether or not, I mean, I went on the website too, and I was able to see in Ojai, but, you know, often people will say Ojai, you know, it's the Ojai Valley, it's not Ojai proper, whatever, but I did go to the sites that were sent to us, and it did say Ojai. And I know that there are breeders in Ojai. And once again, to reiterate what Councilmember Lang said, it's not about whether or not you can own these, it's about whether or not you can breed these. And you breed them for, you know, basically, you know, characteristics that are completely unhealthy, and that's really what it's about. And so I support this 100%. I don't know how else I would, I would think about this, other than it's not okay to do that.
So where we cannot prevent people from buying these breeds that have difficult, all kinds of anatomical physiological problems, but I would hope that this ordinance provides education, and the previous meeting with the slideshow, education is an important component of this ordinance. And hopefully, whereas we cannot prevent you from buying them, from owning them and loving them, we hope that you will reconsider and adopt a cat or a dog from the animal shelter, which is our next topic. So, well, I'm going to be looking forward to explaining why that should be considered. Plus, you can get these kind of dogs free at the animal shelter, you don't have to buy them and promote the continual breeding.
And our job is to support the health and welfare of our community, and this, this really does, because that includes every member of our community, two-leggeds and four-leggeds. So let's go ahead and have the roll call, please.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Leah Hecker talked about fireworks, and I think it's important for people to know, in case they think that fireworks are okay in Ojai, they're not. The issue would be whether we should be permitting the fireworks display that's allowed on 4th of July, but all other fireworks are illegal at this point. And I don't think we would consider eliminating fireworks without the voters weighing in on that one.
Yeah.
For that display that we do on the 4th of July. And I did want to point out that there is no other city in the country, this is part of our report, that has a similar ordinance, and so I would, I'd like to see us avoid becoming a Petri dish for, you know, theories about ethics and the rest.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to our last item, item number five, introduce an ordinance amending the mandatory sterilization of dogs and cats article of the Ojai Municipal Code to eliminate certain exemptions. And we have a staff report, your city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council, a brief staff report. The city's ordinance presently requires mandatory sterilization of dogs and cats with a number of exceptions. The proposed ordinance would eliminate several exceptions that accept dogs registered with the American Kennel Club or the United Kennel Club, or that compete RRR in training, dogs who are earning titles of agility, carting, herding, protection, rally, hunting, working, or other title from the American Kennel Club or the United Kennel Club, or if the owner of the dog is an American Kennel Club breeder of merit. And last, if the cat is a breed recognized by the Cat Fancyers Association that has either been in a cat show or sporting competition in the last year, or has earned a confirmation, obedience, agility, rally, sporting, working, or other title from the Cat Fancyers Association. So to recap, right now, dogs and cats that meet those exemptions may be unaltered, meaning not spayed and not neutered. This ordinance, if introduced by the council, would eliminate those exemptions, requiring those cats and dogs to be spayed and neutered. The other note is, of course, there is the continuing exception for guide dogs, military, law enforcement dogs, search and rescue dogs, and then if a dog's vet or owners of the dog's vet provides a letter certifying that their health would best be served by delaying or not sterilizing the animal. And I know there's been some conversation about adjusting the timeline for large breed dogs, and staff would have no objection to that. The present requirement is within six months of birth to spay and neuter, and staff would have no objection to adding an adjustment for large breed dogs over 25 pounds to shift that out to 24 months has been, was in some public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes. So on Attachment A, page three or four, the first paragraph, I looked at this after we received a very important letter from Heidi Whitman, and rightly pointing out that it can be health issues, serious health issues if you spay too, especially the larger breeds too early. So I'm in support of her concerns, but this is paragraph, is this where the language needs to be broadened, right here, the owner? Because already, there's an exception here.
Right, so the key here is, Ms. Whitman has sought on a further exception, that for large breed dogs, that it be shifted out to 24 months, noting that not all owners of large breed dogs would have the resources to get a letter from their vet.
I see.
That's the concern that the public comment has raised, subject, of course, to council decision.
Okay, so this 24 months, there's a big jump from six months to 24 months, a lot of puppies can be born in that, in that interim. Is, can we find out what really is the right amount of time? Because we don't want to, I'm not a little, I didn't research, 24 months seems, that's two years.
So we pulled that number, not out of our hat, but from a couple of veterinarian analyses and studies that were done, which we can circulate if they're not in the public comment, that looked at it across a number of breeds and recommended a medley of some breeds, 18 months, some 12, some 24, 24 seemed to be what would capture it. But of course, if the council wants to set it closer, that's fine too, perhaps 18.
Maybe a middle path and then a veterinary, is it really expensive to get a note from a veterinarian? Is that really cost prohibitive?
Depends on how much your vet charges, I suppose.
If I could just jump in, I think the other concern that we heard was just, and I've experienced this as an Ojai resident, sometimes it's hard to get into a vet, unless you are already an existing customer. If you're new to town, it can be difficult. That's, that's part of the concern.
I think we should be careful, because we have millions of dogs being euthanized right now, right now.
Okay, any other questions from council? Let's go ahead and move on to public comment. First, we have Larry Steingold, then we have Bill Miley, and then Casey Abbott.
Thank you. I support the neutering of dogs and cats, because it's a good thing. I know we had to wait about a year for our Bichon, because the vet wanted to make sure that whatever sexual hormones, whatever, could get going, sort of didn't like kill them young. So I would suggest that you might, I started to read something about University of California Davis, that they had seen that young, smaller dogs should also wait longer, maybe eight months, 10 months. You just don't want to cause more problems by turning them into eunuchs, or what have you. So I would just caution you on that, and do some, maybe some research, on maybe lengthening it based on data, and based on science, and based on what, you know, versus just, I know that people have looked at studies and done homework, but maybe there's, just make it so that it's kind of flexible. So, anyway, but neutering is not, is a good idea.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Bill Miley, and then Casey Abbott.
Hello. Whoops, wrong part here. I actually did not know we had this ordinance in our code. With the exclusions and exemptions taken out to be removed, eugenics comes to mind. The four months seems arbitrary, arbitrarily uninformed, and which I understand you're going to change. Even our county government makes licensing, licensing of cats optional. And I gave you their website. And the reason we're doing this, because we have too many cats and dogs. Why is that? We had, our family had one Angus cocker spaniel for 14 years. Maybe we need more shelters. Maybe we need more cat and dog owner educational classes. Maybe we need more people to know about selective neutering in Spain. How many dogs and cats in Ojai are licensed? How many are not? The county does not require cats to be licensed, but we require them to be sterilized. So DocuPet is the software the county uses, and I referred, I gave you a copy of that to show altered dog, big loss, unaltered dog, senior altered dogs, voluntary cat licenses. In summary, as I read this draft, there is no exemption for breeders. That's not good. Also making cats mandatory for sterilization and not mandatory for licensing, that seems inconsistent. Why is the city trying to sterilize all dogs and cats at four months? They don't even become eligible for babies until five months. There has to be a better way of influencing pet owners to help control the number of pets and their wanderings. Information and education is best. Also, maybe the licensing fees are too costly for some, and we need a sliding scale. And as one, me, gets older, the licensing fees become cheaper, so more older people.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Casey Abbott.
Hello again. Just want to bring the experience I had recently up in the city of Paso Robles, they used a large masticator machine to destroy all the vegetation in the river. There were many, many people that were homeless were living. Created a huge rat problem for the rest of the town. Great move, guys. Well, if you're going to have a sudden rat explosion, guess what are really nice to have are cats and dogs. They're both excellent rodent predators. So, yeah, make your rule. Hope you have enough breeders in the area. Good luck.
Thank you, Casey. Any comments online, Bridgette? We have one more in the House. Kathleen Smith.
Good evening. I've been walking around trying to find where you guys were listening to you on Zoom, and I was going, oh my God, they're doing a vote. It was interesting for me to listen to some of the comments. I do not disagree with people that are opposed to exaggerations of breeds, the traits, the physical traits of breed. But to have somebody talking about the length of leg for a Beagle.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Kathleen, but that was item number four. This is five, strengthening our spay-neuter ordinance. We already voted on the companion animal breeding item.
Okay, I'm getting, I am getting that. Okay, well, I'll go back to, I'll go to the initial thing. The reason golden retrievers should not be neutered before 24 months, which is recommended by UC Davis, is that they need the hormones, and there are actually, they have proven that the incidence of cancer is increased and at a younger age when a dog is spayed or neutered early. And even early as before a year old. A reputable breeder will recommend that a male does not get spayed or neutered before 24 months. And there is documentation of this. So there are, we would like the females to not be spayed before a year old. We would like them to go through one season. They, they may, there is a higher incidence of mammary cancer for a female golden retriever who's not spayed. But every other cancer, there is a higher incidence when they are spayed. So you guys are, you're getting involved in something, and I realize that the intentions are good. Everybody has good intentions, but there is science to consider here. And I'm not sure that anybody is doing the research behind this that should be done. I'm going to go back to my original comment. We breed to a breed standard. The way a particular breed of dog looks is actually.
Thank, thank you, Kathleen. Time's up. Thank you very much for your comment. We will move on to, any comments online?
No, Mayor, there are no comments online.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I would like to read this. This, I don't know if, if the camera can zoom in, can it? If I do this, I don't know. Probably not.
You might just read it.
Okay, well, I'm going to read it, yeah. Okay. So first of all, I am the city liaison with Ventura County Animal Services. I make almost weekly trips to the Ventura County Humane Society in Ojai, and Society in Ojai. And I have one of my granddaughters, she spends at least an hour a day telling me how many thousand, she goes all over the country and gives me the data on the number of animals in the shelter. She knows which ones are getting adopted and all, all of this. And she did this on her own. She must have just absorbed it from me. I also moderate the Ojai Valley Animal Kingdom and others Facebook sites. And if you just spend an hour there, you will begin to get a sense of what a state of emergency we are in. They, I'm going to read you these, these seven facts about animal shelters, and that I hope will give everyone pause. Seven million dogs and cats are euthanized every year because shelters are too full. Here in Ventura County, they're having to double up. There's like sometimes over 200 dogs. They're practically, they're giving them away. They've waived all the fees. Homeless animals outnumber humans five to one. 90% of pets coming into shelters are not spayed or neutered. Most strays are not kept indoors or provided with ID tags. More than 25% of dogs are pure breeds. When Ventura County went, went, transitioned back in 2012, Dale Hanson and I went to county meetings, and of course, the breeders were opposed to the adoption of county spay and neutering laws. But, you know, almost any purebred, people need to understand that if you do a little research, you will find a, a, not a necessarily a county, well, probably a county shelter as well. But there are groups of people who specialize, they foster purebred dogs. They have 50 German shepherds, beautiful, beautiful German shepherd, every kind of beautiful dog you could think of, you can, you can, just simply by paying for the adoption fee. You don't have to pay $700 or, or more. And here's the really sad part. Only one out of 10 dogs born will ever find a forever home. And, you know, in, along with educating people about the importance of spay and neuter, we hope that people will start to think more deeply about adopting from a shelter. Because what I see every single day tracking these dogs is so incredibly heartbreaking. You know, they're euthanizing little beautiful puppies, and it's our, it's, it's the weight of it, you know, as a community, I know Ojai loves animals, and an ordinance like this, I believe is in keeping with, you know, it's an expression of our deep caring for, for the animal kingdom. So I do want to address, okay, here's my question. My question is, by making these changes, does that still come back for a second reading?
Yeah, like all ordinance is introduction tonight, second reading next time.
Perhaps we have time to do a little more research on how to carefully, I'm in favor of the things that were changed. But I would like to be extremely careful about how to word the, the part about, you know, the age and make sure, and maybe you've already researched it, and you're confident. But there's another opportunity to adjust that if we want to.
Right, the council can adjust it in second reading, depending on how far it adjusts, it might be introduction and do another.
In my thinking, would just be the date, the amount of time. Yeah. So, you know, and maybe there's some other language. I'm going to go and talk to, like, you know, some people who manage shelters, how, how can we do this?
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we introduce an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 4, Article 8, mandatory sterilization of dogs and cats of the Ojai Municipal Code to eliminate certain exemptions.
And that would be with the added exemption for large breed dogs.
Yeah, I'll have some language for that one after she's through with the motion.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah. Well, I'm going to comment, and then I'll ask for a modification.
Do I need a second?
I will second that.
Okay, so I did quite a bit of research on this. And so first of all, I, my wife and I owned a golden retriever, and it experienced having tumors when it was about five years old. And the tumors were removed, and then two years later, excuse me.
We understand.
Whole body was a tumor.
We understand. We're sorry.
We, we took him in, and his whole body was a tumor. And we were told by the vet then it was because he was neutered too early. And that's what the science is saying about large breed dogs is that they, they develop cancer at an alarming rate if they're neutered too early in their life. And, you know, they have, they have gradations for depending on the breed, where they recommend a year versus they recommend 24 months. But, you know, I talked to Matt about this, and he thought it would be much simpler to just have a weight limit. And I'm going to propose 40 pounds, and that it'd be a 24. So our current dog, when we got him, our, our first golden was a rescue dog, but our, but he was a pure bred. But our second dog, we just got from a breeder a year and a half ago, and our breeder said, you know, do not neuter this dog for at least two years. That was like condition of buying the dog from her. And, and she also said, you know, don't neuter it if you don't have to. And I, you know, I think there's one, you know, problem with this ordinance that, that bothers me, and that is that we're assuming that an Ojai resident is going to be irresponsible with their dog. I, I know cats are another issue, but for dogs, I, I can say that our last three dogs have never been out of my wife and I's sight. So this is like the last 15 years, and that's because the coyote issue. So, you know, we're, we're adamant, not, we're very careful. We take our dog out on a leash. Our dogs never run free. And so, you know, I, okay. I, I guess what I would say, so, you know, we, we shouldn't just assume poor stewardship is going to happen. And I do think that it's kind of ironic that we're talking, you know, two weeks ago, or actually last weekend about, you know, rights of nature. I mean, what dog would want to have its reproductive organs removed? They, the, and actually, the other thing that I read was that you remove that, that dogs experience hip disorders as a result of being neutered too soon. And virtually everything I read said that a female dog should go through at least one season. Because for the same reason, that there are hormones, that the, that a dog experiences, you know, going into heat, that if they're never allowed to go into heat, they won't experience, and then they'll have, you know, physical problems as a result of that. So my long way of making an amendment, or proposing an amendment or addition is that we, for dogs over 40 pounds, we require neutering after 24 months, and that for female dogs, that they, that they be neutered after their first season.
Councilmember Francina, do you accept that?
Uh, no. No, I don't accept that as an amendment. I wish I could accept. Believe me, because I'm all about a health, healthy dog.
Not mine, apparently.
No, I, I do want to be careful how we do this. But if, if, I'll tell you, it's better.
So I'll make an alternative motion to.
You have to grasp that, that we are in a true, I can't, I cannot emphasize this enough. We are in an emergency. You know, there's always pros and cons, and everything has consequences. And I, I agree, you're very responsible. But unfortunately, apparently, or it's a fact that the majority of the population is not, it's, it's hard to, I can't find the right words.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to make an alternative motion that we add a provision that exempts dogs that are over 40 pounds, that they not be neutered, that they are not required to be neutered until 24 months, and that for female dogs, they, they are not neutered until they experience at least one season.
Okay, is, is there a second for that motion? I'll second that.
May I, I'd like, you know, when this first came before the council, we had expert, expert witnesses giving an entirely characterizing this in a very different way. I do not have the background to pull that out of my head.
We're going to have another hearing where we can adjust aids.
Yes.
If, if the evidence supports that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I am not comfortable, I mean, I, I recognize that it could be healthier for females to go one season, but I also know the number of puppies in the pound that are going to be euthanized. And that's, it's a dilemma. We're in a dilemma.
And I agree with Councilmember Francina. It is, it's.
It's heartbreaking.
There are shades of gray, and yet the overwhelming number of animals who are euthanized every year is, I think, the bottom line. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. Limiting, Councilmember?
If I may ask a question, wouldn't it be, so we do have an exemption for any dog whose health would be at risk by being spayed or neutered. So would, wouldn't that, that exemption, wouldn't large breeds or females after their, or, you know, up to their first time in heat, wouldn't that go into the health? Could you make a case?
If, if the veterinarian made that case, then yes, that would fall on that exemption.
Okay. Yep. Well, we have a motion. We have a second. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, so we have two motions, right, and two seconds. Just a couple of things that I want to point out. I understand the emergency that we are in. But I don't think that, you know, I, I'm kind of, I don't think that legislating is going to do this. I think the thing to do, this is, this is made for education, more shelters, more education, free spaying and neutering everywhere, all the time. And I would, I would go for an ordinance against backyard breeders. I would make it, you know, just like we made that guy pay $100,000 for putting something up on Airbnb, you know, make it $100,000 if you backyard breed without, without a permit and without, you know, going through some kind of training. I think that's the real issue. Now, the idea of spaying and neutering, taking a, a, a species of animal and changing them biologically, like, that is a huge, huge conceptual idea, that we are going to change a species of animal. And that's what will happen. You know, and it is well known that, that female dogs should go through one heat or two heats. I mean, you know, and we know that, that especially German shepherds, they know now, they, you know, if they're, if they're neutered too early, their hips don't, you know, just like your plates in your head have to come together. They need the hormones to bring their hip joints and their hip bones together. And, you know, just philosophically, I'm not willing to be a human who says that we are going to force spay and neuter on an entire breed. I think we need to solve the problem of bad humans without deciding that it's the victim's fault, and we're going to spay and neuter them. And I understand we're, we're balancing things, but philosophically, I can't go and vote for this kind of genetic sort of fooling around with. I, I can't do that. As much as I understand the problem, I worked in shelters forever. And in Massachusetts, it's the same way. You, you actually, by law, have to have them spay and neuter before you adopt out, although you can give somebody like 30 days if, you know, if they really need it. But I never, ever agreed with that. And I don't agree with it because then what happens is, the only animals that you have are bred animals. And we know what bred animals are like. We know they are bred for features. Whether or not you say they're bred for characteristics of, you know, what they used to do, they're not. They're bred for human consumption. And so we're left with the only animals that are being bred are those that are being bred for human consumption, because everybody else has been spayed and neutered. If you were to take this out to its reasonable and logical conclusion. And it is about rights of nature, and I'm just not going to do that. Secondarily, here's a little bit of hope. That's all we talk about at the dog park. And I go to the dog park all the time. So there is a wonderful lab who had a vasectomy, homo. And so when my dog Willow comes of time, I'm going to see if she can have her tubes tied. Like, to pull out her reproductive organs, it's not as, I mean, I don't want to say it's not as bad for a male dog, but my dog has a barrel chest. Her reproductive organs are way up in her system. So, you know, but that's not the point. The point is, perhaps, we're not, don't have to talk about sterilization. Like, the doctor, the vet here, everybody knows him, he's the most prominent vet here. He had never done it, but it made total sense to him, and he gave this lab a vasectomy. I was like, well, that dog can't breed, but yet it didn't have to be neutered. And so when it comes time for my pup, I'm going to see if she can have her tubes tied. That would solve the problem without pulling out all of her reproductive organs and going in there and messing around. So I would suggest that we look at that alternative. Is it, is that doable? Like, this doctor had, this vet had never done it, but he couldn't see why he couldn't. So he did. Local guy, local vet, everybody knows him. So that would be my suggestion. And so the reason, I, I hope that I made clear the reasons why I can't support this. And I do think that there is an alternative, which is tying the tubes and vasectomies.
Okay.
Councilmember?
May I ask, as far as I know, as long as the animal can't have a dozen puppies, that counts as spay and neuter? How, it doesn't, you can do.
Right, the ordinance.
As a vasectomy and tubes tied, that counts?
Yes, the ordinance states that sterilization means any medical procedure performed by a veterinarian on a dog or a cat that prevents reproduction. However the vet does it, it's within the current ordinance. Certainly most common is spaying and neutering, but there are, I didn't know that vasectomy was an option, but there are apparently other choices.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Rule, I want to assure you that free spay, neuter clinics, mobile spay and neuter education, you know, all of this is part of the conversation. It's, we need all of it to stop this, the insanity and the cruelty that we have now. It's just unbelievable. You can do your own research. You'll be appalled by what you find out.
I work, I work. I understand. We have a mo, let's have the roll call for that motion. Do you mind repeating it? This is.
Yeah, so this would be a motion to, by, last first, so by Mayor Perton Whitman, with a second from Councilmember Rule, to adopt the ordinance as proposed with an added 24-month exception for any dog. for any dog expected to be over 40 pounds when fully grown. And for female dogs after their, to push it out to after their first season of heat. Otherwise, to remove the breeder exemptions.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Stick.
Yeah.
You know, it's, this may, I'll, I'll be fine, but I'm not... There's a difference in my thinking. The 24-month exception, the first season of heat, when does that happen?
Eight months to, to a year.
I think that's right.
That's my understanding as well. Not a vet, but eight months to a year.
So we, it just, it's, it seems like the original language for the veterinarian decides. The only reason I would vote for it is because, or not vote for it is because I could change it at the second reading. Am I the first to go?
Go ahead.
We haven't had the...
Yeah, we haven't had the vote yet, this is common.
Mayor Stick.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
No.
Mayor Protam, women.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that's the end of the agenda items. We will move on to council member reports. Anybody?
Let me get my notes.
Well, you're, Help of Ojai had their 50th year anniversary celebration at Camp Comfort. It was really a spectacular event. Lots of great participation and music and events. So happy birthday to them. And thank, thank you to all the great work that they've done in our valley.
I think we should give them a proclamation. Don't you think?
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
They really deserve it. And thank you for going, I couldn't go.
It was really lovely. And just one more shout-out for those pickleball courts because they are spectacular. So thank you again to staff.
Ms. Palmer.
Yes, Ms. Palmer. Anybody else, any reports?
Well, first I want to give a big shout-out to Leslie and Rachel for the Rights of Nature presentation. I encourage everyone to watch the slideshow and the lecture online. It's really, really incredible, even if we, I mean, it just, it expands your thinking. It's, it's a, it's a wonderful, it was one of the best, most inspiring, in my opinion, very inspiring presentation. So my other report is, I go to the monthly Ventura County Transportation Commission meetings. Usually it's so late, I can never think of what I'm going to say. But now it's only 5:10. So at the last meeting, I, we heard from a, a, she's, she's titled as Principal Engineer for the 2028 Olympics. And there are going to be millions and millions of people descending on Southern California. And she laid out the, there is a, it's a four-year traffic plan in stages. And it was so phenomenal. That slideshow is also online. And it includes, it has everything I ever wanted to see for Ojai, but on a massive scale. You know, bike lanes, every, getting everybody in buses that runs smoothly and frequently. And priority for the million, I think she said a million athletes? I mean, the, it's, the number of people is just mind, well, yeah, 50,000 athletes. But, and it's, anyway, my, when I heard, after I listened to her, and I listened and listened, I thought to myself, if they can do this in Los Angeles with millions and millions of visitors, surely we can manage the traffic in our little town. And I want to tell the El Roplar, the answer to your guests coming in, if they have traffic congestion, do not try sending them out to our residential streets. That's not the answer. So, you know, I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else?
Hmm, no, I, I just want to say that I guess the city will be coming out with a URL for the Rights of Nature forum that we had. And I hope that any and all citizens interested in the question and interested in the ordinance, take a look at that and certainly feel free to come with public comments. We are, this is an educational event as well as a community response. We want to hear what people have to say. So you have to watch it and then you have to come make public comment. So if that's your gig and you feel like you've got something to say, please take responsibility and do that and come say it.
Okay, city manager's report?
Three things briefly. I believe the URL for the recorded version of the meeting should be on the city website now. So everyone should be able to see that. Thank you, Councilmembers Lang and Rule. Secondly, I want to commend Ms. Bridget Mara for doing a great job tonight filling in for Weston Montgomery.
Thank you Mayor, thank you council members, thank you Ben. City manager, city attorney.
Flawless.
And then lastly, it is my duty to inform the council and the public that I did attend the ICMA conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the International City County Management Association from September 21st through the 25th. Learned a lot, networked a lot, had a good time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for attending. All right, anybody else? Future agenda items?
We, we keep talking about the bike trail, the Soul Park. And that could be a future agenda items probably for the next council. But let's, let's put that somewhere. And I'll, I'll keep working on it even when I'm off council.
For sure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all for a productive evening. It's not even 10 o'clock, so we are adjourned. Thank you.